It is five o'clock. Good afternoon, everybody. It is five o'clock and this is the closed session meeting of the San Clemente City Council of August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, five p.m. No public comments. We have motion to move into closed session.
So moved.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.
Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the San Clemente City Council, August 19th, 2025, 5:30 PM. Let's call this meeting to order. Could we please call the meeting to order, folks? Thank you. Let's have an invocation, please. The invocation this evening will be given by Ryan Canty with the San Clemente Presbyterian Church. Come right ahead, sir.
God of love and justice, who leads and guides us, who convicts us of past harm, then lifts our heads to a hopeful future. Thank you for sustaining our every breath. Thank you for our city, for the beauty of our natural environment, in the ocean, the beaches, the hills and trees, for the sun that shines down on all of us. Thank you for all the people living in San Clemente and the diversity of thought and experience that strengthens us. Be with the discussions and decisions made here tonight. Guide our leaders ever onward towards your love and justice. Help them to always remember and have empathy for the marginalized among us. As Jesus said, "However we treat the hungry, the sick, the unhoused, the prisoner and the immigrant is how we treat it him." Be with our city of San Clemente and strengthen our relationships. Bind us together as a community characterized by love, respect and kindness. Help us to look past divisions and see the image of the divine in one another. In the words of Saint Francis, "Where there is hatred, let us sow love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; and where there is sadness, joy." God be with us tonight. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Elder Canty. Councilmember Wu, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which holds the chance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that all members are present. And this afternoon we have a special award, a humanitarian award for McPhineas Holmes Shelby. So is he here? Why don't you come forward and, gentlemen, if you'd join me at the podium for presentation? Okay, whereas the Human Affairs Commission of the City of San Clemente has recognized outstanding students for a long time. We're here this evening to recognize Phineas Holmes Shelby. Whereas Phineas has demonstrated leadership in the numerous organizations he serves, such as being a member of the National Honor Society, as an officer for the California Scholarship Federation, and as co-president of Federation of Christian Athletes. And whereas Phineas has challenged himself as a member of the swim team, polo, polo team, water, water team.
Water polo.
Water polo. I was, I was with him in his hike, but he must be strong to be able to get up in the water. That's good. That's good. And also as a lifeguard for the city of San Clemente. Whereas Phineas has demonstrated his desire to make a difference on campus through his service as a peer tutor, a member of the local robotics team and technology and character, winning the California State Championship, and a member of the Interact Club, a member of the Lucerne Foundation, and the San Clemente High School representative for the American Legion Boys State, is state and in Sacramento. Now therefore, as Mayor of San Clemente, I want to congratulate you on behalf of the City of San Clemente, honor you for your accomplishments and your service, and for what I know will be continued service to our community and to your family. God bless you. Thank you.
That's a good idea.
You've got family and friends who go right ahead. You've got a lot of people who helped you get here.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for this recognition. It's my hope and my dream that I can spark a society and citizenship of humanitarian affairs and of humanitarian service. I believe in an age we are now, we've lost sight of who we are as a community and who we see as our fellow peers. A lot of time spent, as I can say so myself, on screens. I, in sixth grade was when the COVID hit for me. I spent most, most of my middle school, all the way up until eighth grade, I actually missed my eighth grade graduation because I had COVID. So I was, I was staying home for that. But it's my hope that through acts of service and through acts of kindness, we can spread a message of service to others and hopefully from then on. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have, yeah, we do have another presentation. Is Brian, oh, there he is.
And the next item on the agenda is a special presentation of a city tile to Johanna Thoradahl, retiring human resources manager, recognizing 28 years of dedicated service to the city.
Come on up here, Hannah.
Joanne has worked with this fellow for a long time. So we're going to ask Brian to give you your, give you your comments and read about your background.
Normally, we try to keep these brief, but when somebody's been with the city for 28 years and gets promoted every couple of years, it's kind of a lengthy presentation. So bear with us here.
Okay.
Just a few days shy of 28 years ago, on September 3rd, 1997, Hannah Thoradahl was hired by the City of San Clemente as a customer service specialist in utility billing in the Administrative Services and Finance Department. In July of 2005, when the city joined the California JPIA, Hannah started working under the Assistant City Manager, coordinating risk management responsibilities part-time as a risk technician, while continuing to work in utility billing. By July of 2007, Hannah was working full-time in the risk management role and had earned a professional designation as Associate in Risk Management from the Insurance Institute of America. A year later, in 2008, she was transferred to the Human Resources Division where she reported to the HR manager and took on all of the risk management-related HR responsibilities. Hannah was promoted several times over the years, and her response, as her responsibility level increased and additional duties were assigned. By 2011, she was the Human Resources Analyst Two, and then in 2015, she was promoted to Senior Risk Management Coordinator. In 2016, Hannah was promoted again with a reclassification to the position of Risk Management and Human Resources Officer, where she took on higher Her institutional knowledge, leadership and heart will be deeply missed. Tonight, we thank you.
It is people like this that make our city wonderful, make it a great place to live and a great place to serve. So Hannah, we're proud of you. God bless you for your steadfastness, your courage, your strength, your example they give to a lot of people here. So would you like to make, say a few words?
I think Brian said a lot. We're trying to keep it brief, but thank you for the opportunity to be recognized tonight and for the 28 years. It's been amazing. I love the city and all the employees and the RSVPs, really, were like, thank you for showing up tonight. And my son is here as well. This was a very difficult decision to make, but I told Brian when I made it, I'm 99.9% sure I'm ready if I don't cry. And I'm crying, but it's too late because Friday is my last day.
We appreciate you. We appreciate you. God bless.
Bring the family, the family.
Yeah, the family and the.
The people that are here to support you. Bring them up.
Oh, no, no, come on, come on. All those supporters.
Come on in here in front of us.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, can we just grab my HR, my exceptional HR team? Somehow we color coordinated today.
Yeah, really, really. Okay, next item on our agenda is council member reports. Mr. Renner?
Yeah, before we go on to council member reports, I would like to entertain a motion to actually move council member reports to the end of the agenda after the consent calendar. Just been finding that we have a lot of people here with a lot of things that want to be said and at the last.
You have a second for the motion?
A second.
Is there a substitute motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three to two. I guess we'll move that to the end of the agenda. The next item on our agenda is oral comments or communications. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments?
Yes, we do. I will call the first several speakers.
How many roughly do you have?
Twelve cards so far. Yes. Gary Hedrick, followed by Jerry Colomer, followed by Ed Schlegel, followed by Judy Jones. Gary?
Nice crowd. That's a good idea. Yeah, I appreciate the chance to come back and talk to you. Last time was unfortunate, just so many people coming, and I figured, I haven't even tried to get a group together for a long time, and I thought that would be appropriate. This time, we'll come together and show you that there are a lot of people concerned about this issue. So I will begin here so I don't run out of time. San Clemente Green, I'm here to bring urgent attention to a serious public safety concern, visible damage to our nuclear waste canisters at Santa Inofre just outside our city. Next. We obtained photos of canister number 72 that in 2019 showed significant damage in less than two years. We requested that it be reexamined to see how much worse it had become in the past five or six years. Here's obvious evidence of corrosion on canister number 72, and that can lead to stress corrosion cracking. Next. Here's another obvious sign of damage on the same canister, just on the other side, the lengthwise of the long canister, you can see a gouge going all the way down. These inspection photos show clear evidence of corrosion and gouging on canister number 72. Industry experts confirm that these are well-known warning signs for stress corrosion cracking, one of the leading causes of canister failure. Next. Instead of showing us the same damaged areas for comparison, SCE shows some minor damage to number 72 and use that to claim no need for intervention. So the next slide shows just how different this canister number 72 looks the way SCE presented it. These are scratches on the curvature of the canister, and we were asking about the lengthwise gouge and the corrosion. The community engagement panel and the public was denied access to any more photos of canisters because according to SCE, their company confidential, when they should be public. We're in a race against time, and if SCE won't cooperate, we are sure to lose this race along with everything we love about our little village by the sea. And we have another speaker.
Next speaker, please.
Jerry Colomer.
Jerry Colomer. The following organizations support making all photos from visual inspections available to the public and for third-party review by the California Coastal Commission's independent resources letters are on file with the Coastal Commission. Sierra Club, Physicians for Social Responsibility, Samuel Lawrence Foundation Nuclear Energy Information Services Committee to Bridge the Gap, Mothers for Peace, Coalition for Nuclear Safety, Orange County Coast Keepers, Public Watch Dogs, Ecological Options Network, and this issue is finally being raised in the media. Four important articles have come out in just four weeks. Next, please. Just OC Register, just a scratch at Santa Inofre, marred new canisters raises questions of trust. Next. Edison responds to OCR, that's Orange County Register. That picture of the long scratch on 72 is not trying to measure depth. The blotch on 72 is from a paint defect on the transfer cast used to get waste out of spent fuel pools and into dry storage canisters. That allowed iron oxide to affect, to affect to 72. In other words, don't believe your eyes, just trust us. Next. Why won't Edison release photos from Santa Inofre? OCR asks. SCE says, SCE, because when technical questions arise at the plant, other experts explain and folks move on. While here, expertise is often rejected and misinformation often spreads, officials said. So our photos are a misinformation, but their misleading photos are to be trusted without question when the damage is so obvious? Next, please. More alarming news from the surfing's favorite nuclear waste facility. Surfer Magazine, apparently the canisters that have contained all the detectable poisons are not only short-term stored solutions, but they also appear to be compromised. Next, please. SCE tells Surfer Magazine, scratches are all shallow and not a challenge to the integrity of the canisters, no action required. So what about the gouge and corrosion on 72? Still no action required? Show us all the photos taken of 72. If not, why not? What are you hiding? Race Against Time, San Clemente founder Gary Hedrick, we will lose this race if Edison doesn't become more transparent, cooperative and forthcoming with critical data on which important decisions are being made. Next. The dangers of SONGS are losing Race Against Time, SCE Times, from Roger Johnson. Unfortunately, we are losing the race. The county now has no plans, the country now has no plans for how to or where to safely store the 100,000 tons of deadly nuclear waste, including 1,700 tons at Santa Inofre.
Thank you, sir.
Will San Clemente become an unsafe place to live?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ed Schlegel, followed by Judy Jones.
We have Ed Schlegel.
Ed Schlegel.
If we have three minutes each, then it's not exactly three minutes each, but I think we'll be.
Go ahead. Give us your name and go ahead, sir.
Ed Schlegel. The same, next slide, please. This shows the life-size nuclear waste can washed ashore, gouged and corroded. Next slide, please. It's something we don't want to see on our beaches ever. This is the building of the sand sculpture contest, at the sand sculpture contest. Next slide, please. Three things people were shocked to know at the San Clemente's Ocean Festival. Next slide, please. One, 3.6 million pounds of deadly nuclear waste remain stranded at Santa Inofre where nowhere to go for the indefinite future. Next slide, please. One canister holds more radioactivity than the entire Chernobyl nuclear accident. Let that sink in. We have 50 older horizontal canisters and 73 vertical for a total of 123 Chernobyls next to a rising ocean. The graph on the left shows all the dry storage at Santa Inofre, and you can see what Chernobyl has at the time of their release. On the right side, there is increased radiation dosed, dose across Europe after that incident. Ten reasons to use, next slide, please. There's 10 reasons to use thick nuclear waste storage casts. You can see the thin canisters on the right, upper right, that's what the United States uses. The thick casts, lower right, that is what the rest of the world uses. The safety features, thick walls. U.S. has thin canisters, a half inch to 5/8ths. The rest of the world uses thick casts, 10 inches to almost 20 inches. They won't crack, the ability to repair, replace seals, is the ability to inspect inside and out. You don't get that in the United States, down here at Santa Inofre, because they use the cheap, thin canisters. These 40-ton, 5/8ths-inch, thin-walled temporary canisters are 16 feet tall, six feet across, and are vulnerable to corrosion and cracking, unlike what the rest of the world uses. Next slide.
So this is Judy? No. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, our request, this is not a distant threat. It's here now. Transparency and prompt action can prevent a future disaster. Please use your leadership to ensure safety for our community by making the following recommendations to the Coastal Commission.
You have another speaker for that follow-up, or?
What's the next slide?
Next slide, please.
You could read that, Ed. That's what they want. We want the coastal.
Okay, let's have the next speaker, please.
Judy Jones?
Yes, Judy Jones. Make all photos of visible inspection public. Inspect all canisters and re-inspect damaged canisters frequently. Third-party evaluation of all visual inspections. Next. And while you're at it, please add canister number 19 to the priority list after listening to this brief message from the SONGS manager responsible for the horizontal canisters stored in the site.
Play that video.
Play that.
The next slide to the video?
Madam Clerk, are you?
It's, it looks like it just.
Oh, okay.
Pause your time and stop.
Well, I'm not sure it's the city's fault if this is not coming up, so.
The difficulty with nuclear power is that it produces the worst industrial waste that has ever been produced.
Can you go back to the previous video?
This is it, yeah.
No.
Isn't it?
There's one before that.
Oh.
It starts with the canisters, one more earlier. There you go. Okay. This is important.
Please let's have the person at the podium do the speaking, please. This is not a, this is public comments section. Go right ahead.
Oh, it's supposed to be speaking here.
The sound is muted?
This, this sound has to be muted.
The sound has to be muted.
So I don't have the speech. Okay.
Where's now? I don't understand.
So you don't have this guy's speech?
I don't understand what.
Why, they said they have to mute this sound. I don't know why.
Do you want to explain what the policy is on the?
Yeah, the policy is that they show videos, you can show videos, but not the, not the oral, not the, not the oral part of the video. So you can talk, you can talk through it in the time, and this is an important topic, so I'm not trying to, trying to.
The difficulty with nuclear power is that it produces the worst.
So you can talk through it if you like during your time, but you've got about 45 seconds on your segment, so talk us through it if you would.
I don't have, I don't have that speech. I, I watched it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I could just explain.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, sir, your time is over. If you have someone else from the group, we need to keep our protocol in order.
Well, this was just a little hitch in the, I'm just trying to help the city.
You've had your three minutes at the podium. Let the next person speak. She's got 20 minutes left, and we're glad to hear what she has to say. 20 seconds, excuse me. Thank you.
I don't think this is right.
So.
Aren't we here to listen?
Yeah, learn.
Learn something about the danger you guys are protecting us from?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Did you, she didn't even get to.
Please, don't interrupt from the audience. This is the oral communication time. People at the podium are allowed three minutes to say whatever they want to say. We're not responsible for your videos. We can't show, we have a policy against oral, about the audio portion. We can see the visual, but not the, not the audio. So go right ahead, the next speaker.
Well, she didn't, I don't think we even got our 12 minutes.
You don't get 12 minutes, you get three minutes per person that's asked. So if there's another speaker, you're.
Don't you want to get it on a technicality? Don't you even want these people to hear the danger?
Roger Glass is the next speaker.
Is there, is there a next, next speaker?
Roger Glass, followed by Roger Johnson.
I wish someone had told me we couldn't play the sound.
Well, our policy, our policy is stated, and it's pretty clear, if you'd have asked the city clerk or any of us, we would have shared that. So go right ahead, sir.
No. No, no visuals. Yeah, I'm not very happy about how that was played out, but.
Neither are we, but go right ahead. You've got three minutes.
I will be, I will be brief. I'm Roger Gloss. I'm a 55-year resident of Orange County. I live in Rancho Santa Margarita, which is well within a 50-mile radius of the Santa Inofre Nuclear Generating Station slash Waste Dump, and I'm scared. I'm also part of a group of citizens and subject matter experts engaged in an effort to get 1,600 metric tons of highly radioactive nuclear waste stored more safely. I've been hanging around with the likes of Gary Hedrick and Roger Johnson for a whole decade. I'm also a novelist, and in support of this effort, which was cut short in these comments, I've written a short book, only 40 pages, The Day We Lost Southern California: A Future History. It's a fictional look at what we believe could or will happen if nothing is done to more safely store the spent fuel rods from the nuclear reactors. I have free copies with me tonight. I'm offering them to all members of the city council, as well as those in attendance who would like to better understand why I'm scared. And I'll have more books available at the end of the meeting. I'd like to approach the city clerk.
Thank you, sir, please do. We appreciate that.
Present these copies.
Look forward to reading it.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Roger Johnson, followed by Warren Vedreen.
Another Roger, Roger Johnson, thank you. I wonder how many of you ever watched Heulhauser? Did you see the program last week about Santa Inofre?
Sir, sir, please, please address the council, please, not the audience.
Okay, he addressed a half an hour program on Santa Inofre, although with pristine wilderness, never once showed the domes of the reactors, just completely covered it up completely. And that's a problem today. If you ask people, what's the problem with Santa Inofre, they don't know about it. Nobody's doing anything. So let's go back to the 1960s and 70s when thousands of protesters here. So let's go back to the 1960s and 70s, when thousands of protesters here protested the building of a nuclear power plant here. Or there was 1,000 people when a contractor mistakenly mounted a nuclear reactor backwards. Remember the bird dung, shut down emergency generators when there was bird dung? There was electric grid failure in San Onofre when also. What about when they dropped a... Nearly dropped a loaded canister? Well, look at worldwide. There've been all kinds of accidents at nuclear power plants. Since 1952, there's been over 100 of military and civilian nuclear power accidents. There are about 100 million people who live near nuclear power plants in this country alone. 15 million from Los Angeles to San Diego. Did you read about in New York Times a couple days ago about jellyfish? Clogged the nuclear reactors in France were shut down. So sometimes it's funny, but it's not so funny. How many people know that ionizing radiation, if it spreads, there isn't any insurance that covers your home, your car, or your business? Everything is a total loss. If we have to abandon the city, then everything is a total loss. Does everybody know that the nuclear industry calculates dose tolerance for ionizing radiation based on the standard man? They ignore women and children and the fetus, who are much more vulnerable. Does everybody know that the National Academy of Sciences wants to study cancer, right here, 50-kilometer range around San Onofre? The NRC blocked the research. Congressman Levin, others tried to get it funded, and it was blocked again. He did get it funded, but they blocked it. There's been no research in a third of a century. In Europe, they have done research, and they found that cancer does exist in streaks around nuclear power plants. The nuclear industry wants to call nuclear power safe, reliable, cheap, emission-free, environmentally friendly, but it's exactly the opposite. The Hinkley Point Nuclear Power Plant being built has cost about $56 billion. So the presence of enormous amounts of nuclear waste right here in ZIP Code 92672, does everybody know, if you live in 92672, you live in a...
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
We asked the City Council to please do something about this. You didn't have a resolution about five years ago.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your presentation. Next speaker, please.
Warren Vedreen, followed by Donna Vedreen, followed by Riva Buck.
Okay, good evening, council. Okay, Hanford Reservation. It's on the Columbia River, and it produced the plutonium for the World War II bombs and for the whole Cold War era. So the chemical separations were pretty primitive, and there's a lot of radioactive waste put in these big tanks. So these tanks have been leaking into the Columbia River. The first attempt was made to break into the tanks and start sorting out all the layers. What happened was, the thing exploded, injured people, spread a whole bunch of radioactivity. So Mike Doyle, Dr. Mike Doyle and I developed a probe where we could actually punch through and measure the different layers, because these aren't just radioactive. They've got a lot of chemistry. That's why they exploded. So we... While I was there, I got to see the design of the canisters that are at San Onofre now. So, well, they're a little over half an inch thick. The metal is subject to stress-cracking and so on. And I got to evaluate it, and stress-cracking, embrittlement. But they were designed to be portable and reasonably, you know, reasonably sturdy for seven years. Seven-year lifetime as a portable canister was the design criterion. After that, they can be used for long-term storage, but they can never be moved again because they will probably crumble. So that's... We are getting close to that seven years. So what do we do? They can be used for long-term storage, but we got to get them to basically a cavern in a desert mountain, because that's going to be dry storage, and they're never going to be moved, we hope. So what do we, you know, permanent storage in here is wildly inappropriate.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Donna Vedreen, followed by Riva Buck, followed by Paul LaFlore.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. I'm here tonight to speak on a critical public health and safety issue that must be addressed by our city's leadership. Each of you has stated that public health and safety are your number-one priority, and tonight I am asking you to act on that commitment. The nuclear waste stored at San Onofre poses a clear and present danger to San Clemente and our surrounding communities. The canisters holding this waste were designed only for temporary storage and short-term transport, five to seven years. They are already degrading, and once compromised, they may become immovable. These canisters were never meant for long-term or permanent storage, except at permanent immovable sites. I urge you to stand with San Clemente Green and our community in calling for action. Direct city staff to develop a responsible plan that works with state and federal resources to ensure the removal of San Onofre's nuclear waste to a permanent storage facility. Require a comprehensive report to City Council outlining the actions our city can take to protect residents from this growing threat. Even if permanent storage remains in California, it must not remain on our beaches and temporary degrading canisters. The health and safety of San Clemente families, our environment, and future generations depend on leadership today. I ask you to take action tonight and give staff direction on this urgent matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next speaker, please.
Riva Buck, followed by Paul LaFlore, followed by Ron Rodardi.
Good evening. Broadmoor Steel refuses to enforce the 17-foot tree height limit on Delacata. 17 feet is the city's own condition of approval. It was the quid pro quo for Felicidad's land, slope work, and waved sidewalk. It applies uniformly to every building, tree, and shrub on Delacata. The city required that it be recorded in Broadmoor's supplemental CCNRs, and it's all documented in official city records. All of this is further corroborated by sworn declarations from Larry Lazard, the Broadmoor developer, Cecilia Gallardo-Daly, the former San Clemente Community Development Director, and original homeowners Sally Sargent, Jay Rice, and Susan Rice. The council has every one of these documents. Broadmoor has ignored every council directive. The initial demand for compliance 14 months ago, the November enforcement pause intended for direct resolution with Felicidad, and the March 18th directive to abate violations on their face in an expedited manner and without Broadmoor's subjective assessment. As recently as yesterday, they still demand access onto Felicidad properties for their view inspection. Results, only six of 42 egregious violations have been abated. For years, Broadmoor argued that Felicidad should not benefit from HOA height rules because we're not members. In blatant hypocrisy, they force us, through their punitive and arduous HOA process, as if we were members, while openly rejecting Felicidad's concessions and the city's conditions of approval. Felicidad is a land benefactor, not an HOA member, and should never be bound by Broadmoor's internal procedures. Broadmoor is not fighting to protect legitimate rights. They fight for the right to breach their agreement with Felicidad and the city, harming their neighbors with malicious intent and trusting that the city will back down to their threats of litigation. If the city fails to enforce its own conditions of approval on Delacata, it nullifies the very agreement that enabled Broadmoor's development and tells every San Clemente homeowner they can ignore city regulations without fear of direct enforcement. When their grace period ends on September 16th, please uphold the integrity of city regulations and immediately remove every remaining violation on Delacata. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Paul LaFlore.
Good evening. My name is Paul LaFlore, and this is my fourth time speaking before the City Council regarding the Delacata tree height compliance issue. The facts are straightforward. The 17-foot tree height limit requirement was not a suggestion. It was a binding condition of approval imposed by the city. It was the quid pro quo that allowed Delacata to be built in the first place. Felicidad homeowners gave up land, degraded slopes, and even waived the sidewalk requirements or Broadmoor can meet city standards. In return, Broadmoor accepted the 17-foot limit on every building, shrub, and tree on Delacata. That condition was recorded in Broadmoor's supplemental CCNRs, documented in city records, and confirmed by sworn declarations from Broadmoor's own developer, former city staff, and original homeowners who were at the table. The record is clear. And yet, despite multiple city directives dating back over 14 months, Broadmoor has abated six of 42 violations. 36 remain in open defiance, and instead of complying, Broadmoor has issued threats of litigation at the city while continuing to subject Felicidad to their punitive HOA procedures, even though Felicidad is not an HOA member. That is hypocrisy. They denied us the benefit of HOA rules for years, yet now try to use those same rules as a weapon to delay compliance. The question before you on September 16th is simple. Have the violations been abated, or will the city enforce its own conditions of approval? If the city fails to act, send a message that HOAs and their homeowners can ignore agreements with impunity, and the city conditions mean nothing. I urge you to please stand by your unanimous prior determinations, enforce the 17-foot height restrictions as written, and not allow Broadmoor's threats to deter you from taking your actions. Thank you for your time, consideration, and most importantly, enforcement.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, we are one minute away from our 30-minute mark. We have just two speakers left.
Okay, we'll have one more speaker, and then we'll break. We have a limit of 30 minutes of oral comments before we get into city business. So let's have that last speaker, and then we'll...
Ron Rodardi.
We will break. We'll go on to the next item.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ron Rodardi. I'm a... Excuse me, sir, as I'm addressing the council. I'm a San Clemente resident, and I hope that everyone's listening. If any home or business had a reported hazard, without question, it would be inspected, and they'd be demanded to give evidence of what was the hazardous material. Nuclear fuel is kind of a big hazard, okay? Federal cutbacks have removed viability in nuclear regulatory commission actions. They just... They no longer regulate anything. They're an advertising arm of the nuclear business. That's the fact. There are no federal regulatory commissions anymore that have any bite. The state does. The Coastal Commission, if requested by the City Council, will come in, and they will ask SCE to produce the evidence that we feel is strong. The last bulwark of American safety, as we see on TV every day, is the community. They're the ones out defending people who are being dealt with unjustly, who are being arrested for no reason, who are put in prisons and sent to El Salvador. Only the community is standing up. Police aren't. Our council is the administrative hand of community and is responsible to address the well-funded community fears of SCE mendacity, which has been historic. They have the worst record of any nuclear site in the nation historically, and they continue that mendacity. Please allay the fears of our Southern California communities. Ask the Coastal Commission to come in and do their job with your request. That is the only manner for our community to feel safe, and you are the hand of our community. Do something with your hands and call them in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the remainder of the items will be held after... Mr. Cabral?
I was going to give a report on Songs that I'd like to give now instead of at the end of the meeting, because I think it's relevant to some of what's been said. If we could do that with that, just my portion on the Songs.
Yeah, I think that's important. It's an important issue. It's a huge issue. It's probably one of the largest risks we face, and I appreciate the comments that were here. We've got the three-minute rule. We need to move that along. So we didn't mean to cut anybody short, but we've gone 30 minutes with oral comments. Victor, it is relevant to the comments that have been made. It is party report, so go ahead and give that portion of your report.
I'm going to give my report that I would normally give, so I think it is relevant. So first of all, I'm vice chairman of the Songs Committee Action Panel, and what I'd like to announce really is that on October 16th, 5:30, we are going to have a panel that deals with the canisters. I won't debate, and I won't get into some of the statements about whether or not these are degrading or the thickness, because I think there's a few misstatements. But let's have this public forum here in San Clemente on the 16th. I think it's at the casino, but that'll be announced, and it'll be dedicated solely to this issue of the canisters. I should say, at the Songs Committee Action Panel, we've been working on this for a long time. It's not something new. We understand the problem, but our main objective is to get the canisters moved out of San Clemente. It's not a question of money. It costs $2 million a day to store those canisters, and there is billions of dollars to move those canisters in the bank account. So it's not a question. We had a plan to move them to Yucca Mountain years ago that was thought by Senator Harry Reid and President Obama, but we're focused again on trying to get this president to move those canisters. So it's something that we're going to deal with. We take the concern seriously. I think there's a lot of debate about whether and how they should be moved, but it is something that we're dealing with.
Thank you. Let me just ask a quick question. In your opinion, as being on that commission, is it... Would it be helpful for the city of San Clemente to create a resolution to help amplify that effort? Would that be helpful? We've had several people suggest, as a council, we voice. I know your representation's important.
Yeah. To the... I don't think the committee that they've asked us to reach out to has any jurisdiction over this.
I know we don't have the jurisdiction.
No, no, no.
We can't speak for the community. And I guess my question is, in your opinion, would there be any benefit in doing that? Why don't we discuss that at the end of the agenda when we have to do that? So thank you for that report.
Mr. Mayor, we have one card left, and oral communications, one.
We have six, five or six left.
No, just one.
Oh, just one?
I would suggest that we hear that now, because we have basically a special presentation.
Absolutely. Is the Chamber of Commerce representative, is it? Okay, let's hear that. I thought we had more cards than that. Just one. Okay.
Thank you so much. I'm Suzy Lance, the executive for the Chamber of Commerce for San Clemente. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the council, to thank the city staff, to thank our wonderful sheriffs, and all of our dozens of volunteers, and also to the community for supporting our 70th Fiesta Music Festival, which took place a week ago on Sunday. Especially to the community for being a part of this just really fun and really safe event. The Chamber is really proud that this one-day event delivered almost $10,000 in beverage booth gratuities, and those go back to be donated directly to our charities. In addition to that, many of our booths at the Fiesta were operated by our nonprofit organizations, and these funds go directly back to support many of our community programs. And finally, we are gearing up at the Chamber with dozens of other activities, but our final major event of the year is our Taste of San Clemente on November 7th, so we look forward to seeing you all. Thanks for all your work. Thanks for all your work and for all you do.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is item four, motion waiving the reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Second.
The motions made by Mayor Protem Enmire, second by Mr. Cabral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Consideration of agenda items requiring immediate action. Are there any, gentlemen? Hearing none. Let's move on to item six, closed session reports. Madam City Attorney, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session on the Purdue Pharma and Slacker family settlement and had a motion that was approved five-zero, approving the settlement agreement and authorizing and directing the city manager to opt into the settlement, executing all necessary documents to implement that action, and when possible, allocating the city's designated share of the settlement funds to the county of Orange. Those settlement agreements are available at https://nationaloverheidsettlement.com/purdue-slacers-settlements, and there'll be a copy in the back for public review. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any item number seven, staff communications? Do we have any? No? Next item is item eight, public hearings. We have none. Item nine, unfinished business. At this moment, we have none. Item 10A, new business. Introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1794, amending San Clemente Municipal Code 13.04.350 relating to cross connection and backflow protection to comply with State Water Resources Control Board's newly adopted Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook and current industry best practices and finding the ordinance exempt under California Environmental Quality Act. Gentlemen, do you need a staff report on this, or is anyone prepared to make a motion? Or first, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this matter?
We do not have any public comments.
I'll be prepared to make a motion to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 1794. Would you like me to read the whole thing? No? Okay.
I'll second.
Did you read the entire? Just identifying the ordinance is sufficient.
We can identify the ordinance.
Okay. The motions made by Mr. Enmire, second by Mr. Lefler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 10B, update regarding dog access to the San Clemente municipal beaches. Do we have a very brief staff report?
Very brief.
I don't mean to emphasize very, but do we have any public comments on this, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. We have four public comments for speaker cards.
Okay. Thank you, Samantha. Go right ahead.
Okay, I do have a very brief staff presentation, and while Megan brings up the PowerPoint, this item is really to just get direction from council, and we're going to go from here. The topic, subject matter of dog access on San Clemente municipal beaches was directed to the Parks and Recreation Commission early 2024. That's summarized in your staff report. This evening, what we are looking at is getting direction from council on what to do with that recommendation. If you can go to the next slide, please. This summarizes what the Parks and Rec Commission recommendation is. There are also locations, which I'll get to. So as you can see, dogs are recommended to be on leash only, no longer than six feet leash length in length. They need to be active, non-loitering dogs, and they need to be licensed and registered through CASA. Hours of operation would change based on the season. That's Memorial Day to Labor Day, dawn to 8:00 a.m., and then 6:00 p.m. to dusk. Following Labor Day to Memorial Day would be dawn to 10:00 a.m. and then 4:00 p.m. to dusk. Next slide, please. The first proposed location for this one-year pilot program is the North Beach area. I've highlighted it in yellow on the image on the screen. This is approximately 700 feet in length, not square feet. And then the second location, next slide, please, is proposed at South T Street area, which on the left of the screen, you'll see the South T Street restrooms, which is Tower Seven. This takes us all the way down to the Boca del Cannon Beach access, which is roughly Tower Nine. This is about 1,052 feet in linear length. So with that, I'm happy to conclude my staff presentation, if there's any questions. But again, we're seeking direction on where to go from here from the council.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, just a quick question. What made you decide on the South T Street location?
That was a recommendation by the commission, based on the fact that they felt potentially off-season, there's not as much pedestrian usage of that beach, but yet it's still accessible from the beach trail, so people could come down through T Street, walk to the end of the trail, and then get on the beach from there. That was their thought at the time.
Great. And when you say off-season, just to specify, you're talking between Labor Day to Memorial Day?
Mm-hmm.
And when you say that there's less pedestrian, do we have some sort of count at all of how much that would be?
I don't have that data off the top of my head. We can certainly pull it, though, if that would be helpful for council in the future.
But in general, it's a low amount.
Yes. This area is in peak season. Obviously, there's a lot of recreation users of that beach area that typically shifts off-season.
Any other questions of staff?
I have a question.
Mr. Cabral, go ahead.
There is a homeowners' association. Have we reached out to them?
They've been notified of these changes. I believe that we've received some communications over concerns regarding the North Beach area and allowing dogs in that space, and I believe there are some speaker comments this evening.
Okay. And what about in the T Street area? Do they have a homeowner association or...?
Not to staff's knowledge, not that we're aware of.
That's all for right now.
Mr. Will?
Yeah, my question is for City Attorney. Does the city already have an anti-loitering law?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I can look that up and get back to you.
Okay. And if we do, how is that enforced? I have no more question.
Was there another question?
I have no more question.
Yeah, you're going to report back on that? You don't have that?
Yes, I'll have to get back to you. I'm looking it up right now.
Any other questions, Mr. Will? Any other questions of staff? Let's hear from the public.
Okay.
Who's the first speaker?
Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Ken Posikai, followed by Robert Colacott.
Hello, council members and city staff, city attorney. Basically, do you have just one slide, please? Hopefully, that will come up. Next slide, please. So I have reviewed the BPNR meeting of, I think it was April, and one of the concerns that were raised was that it would be limited to San Clemente residents. So in the staff report, it doesn't state that, so I think that was taken out. But there is no enforcement or any fines if dogs are, if someone doesn't pick up their, you know, excrement, the dog excrement, so that is a concern. But at the March 20th Coast Advisory Committee, Ted von Bittner from WSP gave a presentation on San Clemente beer bacteria, pier bacteria source characterization study. In 2018 and 19, the nonprofit group Heal the Bay published their annual beach report card, and in that year, the pier landed number one on that list. That was the worst in the state. He stated that a lot of business said, hey, this is going to impact our tourism. It's going to affect our beachgoers. This is really bad for the city. He further stated that the city had to meet certain schedule with certain bacterial levels by certain date, otherwise there could be consequences, and primarily in the forms of enforcement action that could also lead to monetary fines. I was not able to upload his presentation. It was like 44 slides. But the San Clemente Pier, there was five postings within the 2018 year. The second was Pico Drain at North Beach. One of the things that he also said was, we also saw a bit of what we call excrement pest waste, people leaving their dog droppings behind, and that is seen on city streets all, you know, all along. I've walked, you know, pretty much walked through North Beach 204, and I do see that. The number one, they did DNA studies, and the number one culprit for water, poor water quality was human. The second at the time was ABM due to pigeons, which was resolved, and the third was canine. So my concern is that that North Beach is not going to be, we already have problems with the drain there as well. There isn't that much sand, and so there's a concern where, if people don't pick up any of their nuggets, so their dogs' nuggets, that this will cause another problem, and the state would, you know, cause a health issue, and that the state would come down, and then we have to be compliant with that. But for what he had said, that I guess 20% of the human, were human, that he received in the samples, 20% was collected, were positive, and 24% for birds and 17% for dogs.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ken Posikai, followed by Robert Colacott.
Hello, council. Good to see you tonight. It's been a while. First off, I just wanted to really thank you all for how beautiful North Beach is these days. I'm telling you, I've been here seven years. It's clean. It's safe. It's very well-visited. The weekends are packed. It's awesome. So thank you. That's a big part of all the work you guys did. When it comes to the dog beach, a couple things. I mean, from a health standpoint, dogs pee on all corners of everything. If you go to the beach club across the street from my house, it's so gross. They pee all over, all the light posts, all down the sidewalk, and I can see that on our beach next. They will pee all the way down those posts, go into the beach, they'll pee around the garbage cans, they'll pee around the posts on the swing sets. I mean, I don't want to get carried away here, but to me, dogs just have a challenge with that. They like to pee on top of other pee, so we'll get piles of pee, and we don't get a lot of range, so that will not be washed away. So it will stay in the sand wherever you choose to do this. From the standpoint of safety, we get a lot of children now on the beach. Man, it's full. It really is. If you take a look, and dogs and children sometimes don't play well together. I worry about that. I guess that's up to the owners. If they bite the kids, you know, that'll be their problem, but I think from a safety standpoint, we really need to figure out, you know, is it a dog beach, which means it's dog beach? Or is it a human beach with dogs? So I worry about what you call it, so to speak. In the end, the dog beach brings little value to North Beach community and its residents, really. I mean, some can walk their dogs. Great. I think a lot of them are doing it already, so maybe there's not so much value to that. It doesn't bring value to our businesses. It's not going to attract tourism or visitors that can bring value and buy things. It will actually deter them from coming to our community, because that will be a dog beach, and people will choose, oh, I'll go to T Street, I'll go to the pier, I'll go somewhere else. I don't want to be around a bunch of dogs. So actually, it will detract from the value that it brings. So from my standpoint, I'd love you to focus on getting that trail, go into our pier. That brings tremendous value. I'd love you to get the Miramar open, get that boutique hotel going, and then create a dog park somewhere. You know, I'm hearing our dog park stinks. I don't know. I don't have a dog. It could be, but I see on Facebook, everybody hates our dog parks, so they can't wait for a dog beach, so they can all go there. So why don't you work on getting that dog park open, keep our sand coming, and again, thank you so much for the clean North Beach that we have now. Appreciate it.
Next speaker.
Robert Colacott, followed by Kathy S. Fahany, followed by Donna Vedreen.
Good evening. My name is Bob Colacott. I'm at 1210 Buena Vista, and it's kind of right in the center of 204s. If you're a surfer, that's a popular break above North Beach. I addressed the council on this matter a few years ago when you considered it. This is nothing new. And after my presentation, the council rejected the same proposal unanimously, and I would encourage you to reject this again. And for all the same reasons that they rejected it, and I'll describe some of those. By way of background, I'm a proud owner of a dog, but I know what dogs do. Dogs, we love dogs because they're free spirits, and the world is their toilet, including the beaches and the ocean itself. So, and the city has an experience with bacterial contamination that's generated by exposure to dog waste and other waste at Pooch Beach. And if you, you don't need to speak to a consultant or anything, although I'm a consultant, you don't need to speak to a consultant about the impact of bacterial contamination. Talk to your accountants. The city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars at Pooch Beach trying to deal with bacterial contamination. Do you want another example of it, implement the same kind of facilities at one of our beaches adjacent to our residences? I don't think so. We have better things to spend money on, like, for example, restoring the beach trail up in North Beach. Prior to my, in the early part of my career, I was the county's water quality expert, and I negotiated all the stormwater permits with regional water quality control boards, our regulatory agency on water quality, for all of Orange County, including San Clemente. And I know what I'm talking about. We're exposing ourselves to, as the city has experienced, to significant regulatory demands for what will be our failure to maintain water quality. Although well-intended, it's still, you know, we would still have to somehow make our waters fishable and swimmable to meet the national standards. In experiences with, let's see, there are alternatives to what is proposed. What I propose is that we encourage people to, if they want to have a dog beach in San Clemente, encourage them to go and use the state beach. Now, the state beach is regulated by the state regulatory agencies. Let them duke it out when there's exceedances of water quality objectives. We could also encourage them to go down to Camp Pendleton. Let the regional water quality control board duke it out with the Marines.
Thank you, sir.
But don't spend our money on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Kathy S. Fahany, followed by Donna Vedreen.
Next speaker.
Good evening, council members. I'm Kathy S. Fahany. I'm here to also oppose the idea of designating North Beach and T Street as the city's dog beach. If you really want a dog beach, make all of San Clemente's beach a dog beach. That way, you spread out the impact of dogs relieving themselves on the sand and at the water's edge. It's wrong to single out just two small sections of beach as the place where all the city's dog activity and all the dog waste goes. A dog beach is not a nice beach. It's a dirty beach. Let me give you an example. I spent many years in Costa Mesa, and we used to take our dogs to Huntington Beach's dog beach. It's a huge beach area where dogs run up and down the sand in packs and play fetch in the waves. That dog beach is lots of fun for dogs, but it's only for dogs. It is not a people beach. Nobody goes to Huntington's dog beach to swim, or lay out, or play in the sand with their little kids. The sand is contaminated with dog feces and urine. Maybe the city's rules require owners to keep their dogs on leashes and pick up the dog poop, but hardly anyone does. My husband and I live in North Beach, and we love our beach. We body surf, we swim out, we lie in the sand. We are beach lovers, and we are grateful to the city for investing a significant amount of money and resources into restoring North Beach's sand last year. It's finally a great beach again. Thank you. North Beach is the gateway to San Clemente, and it has a storied history. We were also delighted that a few years ago, and I believe it was at Andy's encouragement, the city announced plans to update the facilities at North Beach and improve the visitor experience there. But the city will be moving in the opposite direction if it makes North Beach a dog beach. No one will think of North Beach as a nice place to spend a beach day. Instead, North Beach will get a bad reputation for having dirty, unhealthy sand. Please don't dump on North Beach by making it a dog beach. If the city is determined to make North Beach or any part of its beaches a dog beach, I urge you to adopt a compromise. Keep dogs off the beach from Memorial Day through October 1. That's when the beach is most actively used by beach lovers. All of September needs to be included in that, because everybody knows September is usually the best beach month. Then dogs could go to the beach for limited hours from October through end of May. Four months for beach lovers, eight months for dogs, if you need a dog beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Donna Vedreen, followed by Sarah Martin.
I walk the beaches in South San Clemente quite often. Beautiful wide beaches. There's all... There's always people with their dogs on the beach, some on leash, some off leash, and there's no real enforcement there. And I am a dog grandmother, and I love dogs, and I would love to be able to take my granddaughter's Russian Borzoy on the beach, very well-trained. But also, I'm in favor of—I feel strongly about what the previous people have said about, let's look at a dog park in San Clemente instead of a dog beach. There seems to be more of a need for a dog park versus a dog beach. And I love the idea of having the dog beach be at State Beach instead of one of our beaches in San Clemente. But if we're going to do this pilot study for San Clemente, let's include all of the beaches in San Clemente, and let's stick with the dates that are proposed by our Parks and Recreation, or extend that time where we don't have the dog beaches in San Clemente. But let's not limit it to North Beach and the other beach being proposed. That makes no sense. There are problems with dogs on the beach that have been talked about a lot, so I would be opposed to what is being proposed tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sarah Martin is the final speaker.
Good evening, councilmen and everyone else here. Thank you again. I agree with a lot of the sentiments of thank you for making North Beach a beautiful place. It looks absolutely gorgeous. Go down there frequently, and it's beautiful and stunning. So, thank you, appreciate all of your efforts. And when you go down there—I hope you all do—and you see who's there, it's typically people who are out of town. Again, it's San Clemente, you go, where is the closest beach? And people will come from out of town, not necessarily dog people, but other visitors. And they're—what North Beach looks like is a lot of times what they understand of San Clemente, will leave a taste in their mouth, or a smell in their nose, one or the other. So, yeah, so basically, and if we're going to have a dog beach, we've got to let them swim. We have a golden retriever, right? With a leash, it defeats purpose. They can—might as well just stay on the trail, in my opinion. So, and I understand there's a lot of complications with that and other expenses, so the—regarding a leash, like if maybe while there's the—the bridges close, when it's low tide, like possibly allowing people just to walk from North Beach to the pier area might make sense with a leash, not hanging out for long periods of time because then there would be the waste issues. That seems to be, like, the only thing that might make sense a little bit in terms of— it doesn't make—why would you bring a dog to the beach if they're—they're just, what, so they can walk in the sand and they can't play in the water? So, anyways, that's it, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman—oh.
I do have an answer to Councilmember Rule's question.
Oh, go right ahead.
So, I reviewed the municipal code. I don't see any general anti-loitering provisions. There are only two loitering provisions. One has to do with residential care facilities and submitting a management plan, and the other one has to do with customers not loitering while sampling cottage cheese food products.
Okay, so, in your viewpoint, if we ha—do have a loitering with a dog, is prohibited clause, is it difficult to enforce?
Like hypothetically, if the council were to adopt one?
Uh-huh. How do we enforce anti-loitering law anyway?
Well, it would be enforced in the same way that all the city's ordinances are enforced, would be my expectation.
What is the definition of loitering?
Well, depend on how the council defined it.
Okay.
Penal Code section, and that would how it'd be enforced. The deputies can enforce loitering. We have no way to enforce loitering in the city. We—I don't think we have anybody that's even—can do it. I don't know about the cottage cheese thing. I'm imagining that was put in in the 1940s or something, but I don't think it's applicable. There's certainly not even a penal code section, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's even a penal code section that addresses loitering with dogs. Does that sound familiar, chief? No, I didn't think so. So, it'd have to be something we would—could create, and that would even be a problem there, because what's loitering with the dog? Is it stopping for two minutes, five minutes? Is it sitting? Is it standing? That recommendation is ridiculous and on face value, so.
Okay, I think the—I think the city attorney's answered that particular legal question. Did you have any follow-up questions on that?
Yeah, I have another question. If we were to create ordinance and allow some dogs, are we allowed to, let's say, either ban certain dog breeds, like say, let's, for example, bo—bo type dogs, are we allowed to do the species-specific regulation?
Your question is, can you ban certain species?
Species-specific, pit bull, german shepherd, species-specific.
I would have to research whether we could.
Okay, but we don't have to make a decision today. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions of staff, a discussion on the issue? I'll—do you want to go ahead?
Just on discussion, Laguna Beach, you modeled some of this off Laguna Beach. They have—in their ordinance, they have their whole beach open for certain times or just sections of the beach?
Their whole, all municipal beaches.
They have the whole municipal beach, and it's open during the morning time, and it's less hours during the peak season and more hours during the off-season.
Yes.
Has there been any study there on bacteria in the water there as compared to before they did the—put in the dog beach ordinance?
I am not familiar with what their bacterial levels are in that area. That would be a—potentially a water quality engineering question.
Yeah, in terms of—I would just say, no. I'll—
Okay, any other comments on this item?
Yeah, I have a comment on it. I would hate to make a ordinance that identifies a particular beach, and I don't know that we are the right city to have—that we have any beaches. Maybe we do, maybe one of you can come up with a beach and—but if we do, I'd like to get the buy-in because I know for this beach, you know, if there's a community association like North Beach, they're all opposed to it. And I think we only had one individual today that really came in support of a dog beach. I think the direction that we've had in the past is working towards a dog park, an expanded dog park at one of our parks, and I prefer that. I just think for issues of water quality, and I think that's one of the things that concerns me most, is the water quality issue. And if we were to address that, as you mentioned, Mark, do we have studies on it? It gets quite cost-prohibitive to do those studies, to see if, you know, having dogs there, you know, influence that. And I would guess it would, particularly if you had a lot of dogs in a particular park. We also have enforcement issues. I think the people of San Clemente are probably pretty responsible, but we do have a lot of tourists that come in, and I would hate to incentivize people to come here to our parks and our beaches, well, our beaches primarily, from all over Southern California because they will hear there's a dog beach and they will come to San Clemente. So, it gives me a great concern. So, I would like—I'm also—I have one question. Have we run this by the Coastal Commission?
Not at this.
Are required to, or?
It would be something that would be part of the SEQA analysis and including coastal commission requirements.
So, if the council were to move forward with a dog beach in either the location recommended by the Parks and Beach Commission or another location, could we begin that pilot program without first receiving formal Coastal Commission approval? It's not a project.
It would not be recommended, but I'm going to let the city manager ask, answer that question.
It would be my experience that we would need a coastal development permit to do that. We may be able to get a waiver. We could request a waiver, which means it would move more quickly through the process, but we would at least have to make some communication with the Coastal Commission because we don't have a certified LCP. And we're working towards one, but right now, they make all coastal decisions on our behalf, only because we don't have that certified LCP right now.
Certified coastal—how far are we away from that?
I believe we're trying to finish that in the next few months. We have been working on it pretty diligently. I know one of the issues that are outstanding and we're working on right now is that parking study. That's one of those issues that we're trying to wrap up to get our local coastal program approved by the state.
So, Mr. Mayor, I—my direction, my personal direction, would go towards the dog park. I think we need something for our dogs. We have an outcry, we've heard an outcry for a dog park. I don't—as I've mentioned, I think only one person showed up for a dog beach this evening, which doesn't demonstrate a lot of interest, but those are my concerns.
Rick?
Sure. I'm not a dog owner. I've been contacted by a lot of dog owners—I know all of us probably have at one time or another—kicked it down the road. I'll just tell you my concerns with the proposed dog park, or dog beach. And could you put up my slide, please, Laura? North Beach is not a location where we want to do this. The beach is way too narrow. High tide, there's barely any beach. There are people down there all the time. We finally kind of got it cleaned up, and there's just too much traffic there. I think there's too much traffic at T Street also, to tell you—the truth. I brought this up. The only place I could possibly think to put this is between Linda Lane and our Marine Safety Building. That area, south of Linda Lane by a couple hundred yards and a couple hundred yards or hundred yards or so north of the Marine Safety Building, there's virtually nobody there except in the summer, the really heavy summer period where Linda Lane kind of spreads out and the pier spreads out. So, there's not people there. The beach is fairly wide at most of the times, and so I don't think dogs would be invasive at that location. That is the only conceivable location. I would definitely not support anything at North Beach or T Street. I think the length of time for this pilot program is too long. A year is too long. I think Ms. Esparati made a great suggestion, October to May, eight months. What's good about that? We can evaluate it, and if it's not working, we can dump it before the summertime where it's going to be, you know, more problematic. Another reason I like this location is it's—in—we have cameras that pick up this location, we can monitor it. It's close to the Marine Safety Building, so they actually traverse that area a lot. And so, enforcement, if we can do that, would be less problematic. And Laguna Beach was brought up, and their ordinance is their dogs do have to be on a leash, they're not allowed to run and to surf. And there is one beach, Thousand Steps Beach, is prohibited. So, Laguna has that one area that's prohibited. I can't see having dogs running over all of our beach, especially in a pilot program. Loitering with dogs is—that's not even a thing. I don't know who thought of that, but that's—loitering in the penal code is a really hard thing to enforce with police officers, let alone loitering with a dog. So, I think you can just toss that out. Yes, we would have to come up with some ordinances for—we have an ordinance for dog off-leash now, and the fine is very heavy. We would have to enforce that more stringently. Dogs, we'd have to come up with another ordinance for dropping dog crap and not picking it up. So, while I appreciate dog owners and their dogs and their love for dogs, those are my thoughts, were about the only way I could possibly support a pilot program.
The—let me ask you a question, Rick. The slide that you put up, the red area there, that's a specific area?
It—you know what? I'm not very—it's kind of the best area north, you know, you'd have to go down and we'd have to actually look at it to figure out seven or 800 feet there. I had a difficult time taking a picture and putting a spot on there, my technical ability.
So, you're thinking more Linda Lane down?
South of Linda Lane between Marine Safety.
Somewhere there. Did you want to weigh in? I had a comment, but I'll wait for you.
Yeah, just my comment. I mean, I think Laguna Beach is a good model of this. They have the whole area except for that restricted area. We need a non-dog area camp, but I like the idea of just doing it, you know, 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. You're not going to get tons of visitors outside of San Clemente coming down to be here at 6:00 AM to walk their dog. It's going to be locals doing this, locals who most often have their dogs on the beach anyway, even though they're not supposed to. And I understand, you know, there's an enforcement issue there. But I think, you know, there's some good points of having it just in a specific spot can lead to over-sacration in those specific areas, but going throughout the beach just from certain very limited times on a pilot program of October through May, I'm fine with that. I think might be worth just trying out. I also understand, we are a very busy city right now, and we have a lot going on, and we keep adding to our—to our traffic jam. And I know a priority is to get a new dog park in, so I'm not necessarily opposed to getting a dog beach, if that's, you know, the rest of—the or making it extended throughout San Clemente for a limited time. But I also know we have limited staff time to get things done, too. So, I'm not necessarily no on this, I just don't know if now's the right time for it.
Did you want to weigh in, Mr.?
Oh, yes, of course. Thank you, Mayor. In concept, I would have supported a dog beach. I think a dog beach is a—will be a very popular idea for our citizens. There are many, many homeowners with dogs. I don't have a dog, I have a cat. I wish that maybe we can make it instead of a dog-friendly beach, pet-friendly beach. So, I don't think my cat would ever want to go out to a beach, but with enough cuddle, maybe they'd do it, right?
Bring the goats.
And maybe they can see their furry friends, maybe a tortoise, whatever. But to address our residents' concern, I think Mr. Postacca and Mrs. Fahani made good points that our residents are most likely responsible dog owners, but sometimes visitors don't know much about the rules, and so they tend to be a problem. So, my recommendation is that we can—now, it's a pilot program, so we have to limit the scope. For the location, I thought North Beach would be a natural selection because it's an isolated location, but I'm open to—I'm open to have—to take Rick's recommendation, which is north of a Marine Safety Tower, and from there, you go to the end of the Santa Beach, it's probably about 1,000 feet, about the same length of a North Beach, and the beach narrows down to nothing. So, that's a good amount of area to spread out. For the timing, I think an eight-month experiment is a good one. So, after summer, we do a pilot program. Before the next summer, we have—we can have the staff to come back to give us an interim report. Then, towards the end of it, we can have the staff to come back with another report to decide if we want to extend the program or make it permanent, depending on the result. There are lots of challenges, of course, water quality is a concern. And then, we exclude the weekend. Specifically, I want to exclude Friday night, Friday afternoon, Saturday all day, and Sunday morning. So, that way, we eliminate or we contain much of a problem created by visitors. I do think that visitors, if they bring a dog here, they're not going to go to a retail store, they're not going to sit in a restaurant, right? So, their contribution to our economy is—now, they may buy some fast food, but that's about it. So, I think exclude that most popular weekend timeframe will help to contain that issue. So, the language come back needs to have automatic sunset clause there, so if we don't decide to extend it, it will automatically expire unless we decide to continue it. So, anti-loitering with dog, I don't know how we can enforce it, or so I recommend we get rid of that. Lastly, I want to find out if we can ban any dogs that is considered by CASA, by our Animal Service. If they're considered dangerous or very dangerous, extremely dangerous, any vicious dog, we should not allow them to get to the beach. But I also think that some breeds, say, golden retrievers, labs, the poodles, and the spanios, they're friendly dogs. Maybe we allow them to be leash-free. I don't know. I don't know if we can do a species-specific regulation. I think in California, it is okay, but I'm not 100% sure. So, maybe attorney can study that. So, that's my comment.
Yeah, my thoughts are on this. I suggested that the city do a pilot program four years ago, and the council on a split vote didn't approve it at that time. And there are concerns with, you know, bacteria and, you know, dogs being potentially dangerous. But, you know, we live in a society of dogs. In San Clemente, we've got approximately 16,000 dog owners. And the dog owners that I see and talk to on a pretty regular basis love the idea and have encouraged me to say, can we have a space on the beach? Can we have access? And, you know, a lot of dog owners tell me, they say, we're going down there now anyway. We're going down there early, and they're doing it improperly illegally. But I like the concept because our beaches are pride and joy. It's why we're here. We love it. We love to spend time on it. A third of our population roughly has dogs, a quarter of our population owns dogs and would love to have access. So, I'm kind of in favor of testing it out. I was intrigued by the comments about, let's, if we're going to have impact, let's minimize the impact by spreading it out. That, I initially kind of rappelled a little bit about that, but at the same time, it makes a lot of sense. So, in concept, I'm in favor of a pilot project. I'm in favor of limiting it to a certain time of year, a certain time of day. I don't know that we need to get into the species limitations. You know, if a county is designated as a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog, and they're designated, they have to by law be muzzled and be very restricted in where they go and who they interact with. So, you know, but we interact with dogs now on sidewalks, on parks, downtown, all over the place. So, I'm not sure that I have a lot of concern about safety. And in terms of enforcement, we can enforce this the same way we enforce no alcohol on the beach, no smoking on the beach, any other way we enforce rules. So, I'm in favor of a pilot program that's limited, that has a six-month timeframe, that has a pilot, excuse me, a sunset provision. And so, and I like the geographical area. I agree with you. North Beach is not the right location. Anywhere near where we have the major part of our community and tourist activity, that's not a good location. So, but north of the Marine Safety Building to Linda Lane is isolated. It's visible. It's accessible from both sides. So, I think that's, I like the location. So, I'm in favor of a pilot program. That's my thoughts.
Can I just speak to Linda Lane? My one concern with Linda Lane is that that is where most families go. And that's, I think, more families go to Linda Lane than they do to North Beach, hanging out there. And that's where I take my families. That's where my, everyone goes and hangs out at Linda Lane more so than at North Beach.
Well, that's a pretty, that, from Linda Lane to the piers, I don't know what the distance there is. It's got to be 7,000 feet.
Yeah, that, the area that I, on the slide, is not, you don't walk under the tunnel, and that's where the north, that's where the dog beach would be.
Talking north of where the bridge is? Like, where the access point is to Linda Lane?
South of that, not north of it, south of it, towards Marine Safety.
I mean, that's where most of the beaches and most of the families hang out. So, that's why my one concern is...
So, to eliminate that area, you could identify potentially a, from the Marine Safety north at a certain distance?
I want to do anywhere north of Marine Safety. I mean, that's, I mean, everyone, all of the family residents that I know, that's their main hangout spot is between, right north of the Marine Safety headquarters and where...
I don't think in the winter, during this pilot period that we're talking about, I don't think that that's true.
Maybe not.
Again, early morning.
Summer.
Same thing with North Beach, though. Like, it's not going, there's, I'd say there's even less residents there at North Beach during that same time period. So, for me, in the idea, I think it's, the idea that people are going to be coming here and not spending money, I would have the opposite idea, that they're going to come here and they're going to buy a cup of coffee. We have so many residents that are businesses, and small businesses that are dog-friendly, especially in the morning, they would come and get breakfast with their dog, other things. But also, I think if we limit those hours, 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, or 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, that really is going to limit it to more San Clemente residents.
I mean, are we ready to make some kind of proposal?
I think so. We've had, we've all kind of weighed in on our thoughts. If there's a specific proposal, we'll entertain it.
I'll start it, and then we'll see what happens. Okay, I would propose an eight-month pilot program. I like the hours, eight till after six. I think Mr. Wu's suggestion, especially during the pilot program of having it week-only during the week, is that, if it interests anybody, it might kind of, you know, transition into a...
It needs to be limited in a way. This is a pilot program.
So, I kind of like it. No afternoon session on Friday, all the way through to the morning session on Monday. I think that's a good thing. The dogs on a leash, no longer than six feet. I think most dog parks, except for Del Mar, that's kind of what they have. Dogs must be licensed. We also need to come up with ordinances to address these issues. The leash no longer than, well, we do have a leash law, so that's already in there. Dogs must be licensed. Do we already have an ordinance for that, Samantha? Or, do you know?
Yes.
We already have that. And then how about the picking up the poop? Have we got an ordinance for that already? Or do we need to create one?
I believe it's in there.
Okay.
We'll confirm.
Then I would stick to my geographic area to be kind of decided a little bit north of the Marine Safety, well south of the tunnel access to Linda Lane. I think it would be quite a bit of distance.
We have to have some sort of specificity there. We don't want to be so vague that we can't identify the area. You want, did you have an idea of maybe putting 200 feet, 500 feet, 600 feet from the building?
Trying to think.
That doesn't encroach so much on the...
Is Rod still here?
If I can help you, I'm just, sorry, I'm on Google Earth right now.
Okay, so if we could figure out a distance south, either north or south.
So, if you are just north of headquarters to the Quarter Lane restroom, that is 80 meters. What is that, 260 feet approximately?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if you use that, you could take another 260 feet north of the Quarter Lane restroom, takes you slightly south of Tower Six.
Okay.
That gets you around...
So, that's about a 500-foot space.
That, and then that's, that is a...
The two football fields almost.
Yeah, that's about 250 feet or so south of the Underpass access.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
It does.
And that's really rough, but that's the best I could do.
I don't think there's many people before 8:00 AM there.
Eight to 10, did you say, or eight to...
Well, it's like, it's, yeah, it's...
Six to eight.
Six to eight, basically.
Six to eight.
I don't think that's, Linda Lane is in a big surf spot. This is well south of 204s. I just, I just think that's the best compromise. And I think that would be October to May. Ordinances we have, the location we have, that would be my proposal, I think.
Are you going to, are you including the south of T Street one in there as well?
No, I'm just, I'm just having one location for that. See how it works, see how it works out.
I think that's too long of a period for the test. I'd like to see it just, you know, maybe six months, to cut a couple of months off.
October to March?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, I'm not against that.
Yeah.
I mean, if it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
That's six months.
Well, if it needs California Coastal Commission, some sort of approval, and it got delayed, no matter what, it cannot exceed a Memorial Weekend.
Right.
What with the sunset provision, we wouldn't be granting permission beyond that.
Well, can we approve something with the contingency of city manager? Yes.
If I may, staff is seeking direction about a preferred program with which it could then do a SEQA analysis on and coordinate with the Coastal Commission. So, the SEQA and the Coastal Commission would come before the council got an ordinance to consider.
The only other two conditions I was going to say is SEQA and Coastal Commission, yeah.
Well, I mean, I...
Let me ask the city attorney a question. We currently have an ordinance that says no dogs on the beach. If we were to, if we were, and I'm not suggesting we do, if we were to simply eliminate that ordinance, eliminate that ordinance, would we need to get SEQA and Coastal Commission approval to eliminate an ordinance? I don't think so. I could be wrong. So, I'm wondering why we do that.
But that's just allowing dogs to be everywhere 24 hours a day. That wouldn't, I don't, that's a SEQA thing, isn't it?
I don't know. I don't think so, but I could be wrong.
It's a SEQA issue. Whether or not you guys had found that that would be an exemption to SEQA, there would be a, there would be a question before the council. You guys may decide that that's an exemption, but there would still be a SEQA question in it.
Well, why don't we do this? I'm in favor of a program that allows a shorter window, six months, with the timeframes that you mentioned, 6:00 to 8:00 AM, after 6:00 PM, no activity Friday through Monday. The leash is there, clearly licensing, mandatory poop pickup, and a sunset provision so that at the end of six months, the pilot program ends. So, I could support that. I think the number of dog owners that we have in this community, I think would find it a blessing to have the freedom on occasion to access the beach with their beloved dogs.
So, you're saying, make it a six-month, but not have a starting month? We'll just, this will be the program, then when it can get approved by the Coastal Commission, then we like start it?
Right. That's, those are the parameters. We'll bounce it by the regulatory agencies and do some additional analysis to see if it's actually required. If it is, we'll do the, we'll do the review. And if it's not, you let us know that it's not required.
But we wouldn't be doing it, we'd have to set the dates, the specific months, because we're not going to do it in summer.
Well, the... I guess...
You can still do a pilot program in the summer, just...
I wouldn't support that.
Can I just add another question? In your experience, Andy, what might be the timeframe of something like this to get through the Coastal Commission? Even if we get a waiver, you know, best-case scenario, how long might it take?
So, the primary, the primary goal of the Coastal Commission is to improve access to the coastal environment, right? So, it's very likely that the Coastal Commission would view dog access to a beach as additional access that isn't being allowed right now. So, there's a possibility the Coastal Commission would say, you know, we're willing to consider a waiver here because it increases access to coastal resources. So, again, that's just my experience from having worked with Coastal Commission. What I don't think the Coastal Commission would favor is that no communication. You know, we talked about, can we just, you know, reverse our ordinance? They probably want some input only begin because we don't have a certified LCP, so they view themselves as the regulatory body for our coastal area. So, I think that they may be willing to consider this as a waiver, especially if it's a pilot project, only because they may view this as increasing access. But that's a guess. They may say, no, this actually restricts access to other people that want to come to the beach that don't have dogs. I just hate to outguess what they do, but their number-one priority on this issue is going to be, does this increase or decrease access to the coastal resources of the city?
Okay, well, I, yeah, this is tough to make work. I mean, even if it takes longer, all of November for six months is still only taking us to April, which is well before summer.
Typically, as you can see in the other coastal communities, typically the Coastal Commission has been supportive of dog areas on the beach, and the restrictions really have come from the city and the residents saying, hey, let's limit it to certain areas, why not? I think the Coastal Commission has generally been supportive.
I'd be for just doing the six-month open-end ordinance, do it as quick as we can. And if there's a problem, if it ends up that it's supposed to start June or July 1st, we'll come back and we'll fix that.
Yeah, we're just tentatively, make it a six-month, isn't it?
And we just leave it open-ended for now. Maybe it'll start in October, and maybe it'll start in November, and we'll still good. Maybe it'll start in December, and we're still okay, you know, with it. And if there's a problem, it's delayed too long, we'll come back and we'll do something about it. So, it's not starting July 1st or whatever.
And I didn't mean to be evasive in my issue.
No, you're completely, it's okay, Andy.
Well, right now, we allow dogs on our coastal trail, right? So, I think staff and Coastal Commission would have some discussion about whether or not this is a new SEQA analysis or whether this is an addendum to one, because that's, in some areas, the coastal trail is part of the beach. And so, it's just, it's hard to answer off the cuff until we have some of those discussions with the Coastal Commission. So, I don't, I don't want to answer for them.
Well, again, I'm still fine.
We can have those discussions, and whenever we get the answer back, we'll begin the pilot program if we have a majority in favor of doing that.
Yeah, I'd agree with the city manager. It's not going to be a big deal for Coastal Commission.
I don't think so.
Well, we'll hope, yeah.
Rick, are you prepared to make a motion?
Okay, with all the, with all those conditions that I made, is it pretty clear, Laura? Okay, I would make a motion that we move forward on the pilot program for a dog beach.
Six months effective when...
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Effective, I just want to understand the motion. Effective when the SEQA, the Coastal Commission review is completed.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
We don't have a second yet.
I have, I seconded.
Okay, we have a motion.
Friendly amendment that instead of the Linda Lane area, we stick with the south of T Street area instead. I think that area is very, like, it's vacant during that time, and I just don't...
I think T Street's our most popular surf spot.
This is way south of T Street, though. It's past, it's past the, it's past the bathrooms, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's right by the hole, south of that, and it'd just be in the mornings.
South T Street restaurants.
So that we know what area we're talking about. Identify the restrooms with a...
Restrooms, and where would it end?
With 300 feet on both sides of the restroom?
Tower Nine.
Tower Nine.
From the restroom to Tower Nine.
Well, from the restrooms, what's the distance?
That's about 1,000 feet.
Parking will be challenging there.
Well, again, that's, the thing is that it really would limit it to just local access, then.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Kind of a little more discussion? Yeah, the one...
We have a motion pending in a second. That was a request for a friendly amendment, and...
I'm thinking about it.
Well, you can have discussion on the motion if you want to.
Yeah, I, yeah, I do. Because the location I picked, two things. Parking was the most accessible from both ends, and you could kind of get to it if you needed to. And the visibility of people that could monitor it is right there, you know, coming and going all the time. And you have eyes on it and cameras on it, and that's the only reason. I think the farther south you go, the less we're going to have to monitor it, the less resources. I don't disagree with anything you said, except I'm adding in the other components.
Yeah. My one concern with Linda Lane is that is, I mean, talking about where animals do their duty, that is just a very family-friendly area. I wouldn't want to, you know, same reasons that people brought up not to go to North Beach, that would be the reason not to have it at north of Linda Lane.
I'll accept that, I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Okay.
If that'll make, if that's...
I don't like T Street's location. I think parking will be very, parking will be a big problem because the big, the major parking areas are Pierbo, North Beach, and Linda Land. And there are some parking at a T Street, but they're pretty busy. So, there's not much parking, because surfers went there in the early morning.
Yeah, and the parking at T Street before 8:00 AM, it's empty.
Not bad, yeah.
Yeah, and it's all, like, again, so they'd go down T Street, take the trail down. But again, these are going to be mostly local people.
Can I ask real quick?
You can accept that location?
Yeah, I was just going to ask one quick question.
Go ahead.
Samantha, from T Street Bridge, how far south is the location that we're talking about approximately? Because that's where people will have to park for this, is in the T... It's closer to State Park?
Yeah.
No. Oh, yeah, I see. Park at either one, yeah.
Okay. I made it. It looks like it is roughly 300 feet or so, 350.
And you can walk down the trail to that locate, you park at T Street, you can walk your dog, which is completely legal now, down the trail.
Yeah, it's probably, sorry, it's probably closer to 450 feet or so.
Again, I need to understand the geographical area we're talking about. It's from the bridge at T Street?
Do you want that slide?
Yeah, there's a slide on it.
There was a slide. Do you want the slide, Mark?
Sure.
Be helpful.
Yeah.
Put it on the screen.
If you go to the bridge and you walk south, there's a bathroom stall, what, 300 feet?
Yeah, I know where that's at, yeah.
Yeah, it's about 500 feet.
So, south of the bathroom stall, down, like, that's right where the hole is at.
Right where the what?
The beach is called the hole.
No, point to the geographical area where you, where you went, this entire green area?
Yeah, that whole green area.
And that's about 1,000 feet?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I get some...
So, that's in front of Boeckert Del Canal. So, that's in front of, uh, Boca Del Canyon?
Yes.
Now, that's, what, what do you call that?
Housing development there, what's it called?
There's Boca Del Canyon there.
No, but what's the, when you drive in past the wall there and go down the hill?
Yes, I don't recall the name.
Yeah, I mean, it's a...
Yeah, I could, I can, I can support that location. My, my preference would have been up farther, farther north, but I can, I think that, that'll work for a pilot program. I think actually, my idea was a much smaller portion of the beach, but this area is, is fine with me, I can support it. Is that a motion? Is that a friendly amendment?
I'll, I'll, I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Uh, the second, does the second, accept the friendly amendment?
Are you seconded the first?
I don't, I don't accept.
No, I'll, I'll second you, I'll second your motion. So, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the mo, is the motion understood?
Could I just make one clarification on the friendly amendment? You, did you mention mornings only? I thought I heard you say that.
Whatever the, the hours were that you came up with.
Okay, so it's still 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and then anytime after 6:00 PM is still, okay.
Six to eight after six. Okay, uh, we have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? Victor?
Well, I, I have another friendly amendment.
Well, uh, you'll make a substitute? We have a motion and a second, but go ahead, you can ask a friendly amendment.
That is, that we put some kind of sign, signage that lets people know, because, you know, if it's 8:00 AM, or if there's, you know...
No, we have to have signs, because with the ordinance number on it, that's only we can cite people.
Yeah.
But we'll also note where it ends, so people are really clear.
Right, very clear.
All this is to get, give direction to you to come up with it, because you, you have to create the, the ordinance, right?
Much appreciated.
Yes, all right.
Also good to get in contact with the Bandago people.
Got to get the, yeah.
All of them this week, yes.
All right.
We're also going to add, add more supply for the, for the plastic bags, biodegradable plastic bags.
They have those now on the beach trail, they just...
Yep.
Well, we probably need more.
Okay, we have a, a friendly amendment that's been accepted. Obviously, signage is important, that, we'll incorporate that in the, in the motion. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for a question on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Pass is 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on our agenda this evening is item 10C, and that is a resolution. The U.S. Surfing, World Surfing folks asked us to kind of give them a boost and, and support them. We, we did that by, by letter last, at our last meeting. We now have a resolution that's been modified. The modification's in the back of the room for people that have looked at the onsite agenda material on our website, and, and they haven't been able to see the modifications, it's in the back of the room. And that modification was made because Council for USA Surfing suggested we eliminate certain language because of contractual obligations they have with others. So, that, uh, are any public speakers on this item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do.
How many?
We have four, no, three, we have three.
Three, okay. Let's, uh, do we need a staff report on this at all? Okay, then let's hear from the public.
Candace Appleby, followed by Becky Fleischauer, followed by Gary Ward. Candace?
Thank you for your patience, and welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Candace Appleby. I grew up surfing right here in San Clemente. As a San Clemente High School student, I had the privilege of having surfing as my first class as a member of the National Champion Triton Surf Team. Go Tritons! Since then, I've had the honor to represent the United States and San Clemente as a Team USA athlete, and I've brought home eight world titles in the surfing discipline of stand-up paddle boarding. I've spent my entire life in the water here, competing, coaching, and sharing my passion with the next generation. San Clemente is my home, and I'm very proud of that. I also serve as a board member for USA Surfing and as the U.S. Olympic and Paralympic Committee's athlete representative for the sport of Olympic surfing. It's a role I take seriously and one that requires what's best for surfers and the sport above all else, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here because I want to sincerely thank you, this council, for stepping up and using your voice to protect what's right for our athletes, our sport, and our community. As someone who has seen all sides of competitive surfing, from the GROM division to the world stage, I can tell you that what athletes want most is a national governing body that truly knows surfing, listens to surfers, and puts their needs first. Surfers already face the unpredictable, challenging ocean conditions, intense travel, and the pressure to perform. What they need from their leadership is stability, consistency, and a clear voice that advocates for their development and well-being. USA Surfing has provided that voice. It's a privilege to be a part of a team of leaders, from our CEO to our San Clemente-based Investor Alliance, who care deeply about doing things the right way. We don't just talk about supporting athletes, we live it every day. I'm proud of the athlete, athletes who have spoken up, including gold medalist Kara Pinkerton, who stood where I am tonight just a few weeks ago. And I'm deeply grateful for this council for listening and for standing with us. Again, thank you for doing the right thing for surfing and for the right thing for our surfing town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
By the way, my wife has your model stand-up. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Becky Fleischauer. Mayor, council, city staff, thank you. I'm, I'm Becky Fleischauer, CEO of USA Surfing. On behalf of USA Surfing, thank you for putting forward this resolution and, in support of surfers' self-governance and the Olympic Charter. This isn't just about governance, it's about what's best for surfers and our community. USA Surfing is proud to call San Clemente home, the global hub for surfing and training, and our training ground for many of the world's top athletes. With Lower Trestle set as the LA 28 Olympic venue, this community is at the very center of the sport's future. And this is an opportunity to leverage the world's largest sporting stage for our community. We're grateful for the leadership of athletes like Candace Appleby, the winningest woman in sup. And as USOPC's surfing representative, as she said, she listens carefully, considers every side, and never waivers for, for doing what's right for our sport and our athletes. And we thank World Surfing Games gold medalist Kara Pinkerton, who stood here earlier this month and spoke from the heart about what surfers need, a national governing body that's dedicated to surfing, listens to surfers, and stands up for them. Because, as Candace said, surfers compete with a lot of unpredictability already. So, thank you for standing with San Clemente Surf Community to leverage this legacy-building opportunity to reinvest, reinvest Olympic revenue back into our sport and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
No more speakers.
No more speakers? Okay, um, gentlemen, do I have a motion? Uh, there's been a motion to approve Resolution 25114, and it's been seconded by Mr. Unmire. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Next item is... Uh, yeah, let's take a five-minute break. Let's come back at about 7:35. We're back in session. The next item on our agenda is item 10D, consideration of resolution declaring surplus and approving disposition of retired fleet equipment and vehicles, implementing an in-house vehicle auction program for silent auctions and awarding a contract for professional auction services to J.J. Kane and Associates. Gentlemen, when this was on the agenda a month and a half or so ago, to, to send all of our fleet vehicles out for auction, the council considered the possibility of, of auctioning those vehicles off to our locals instead of shipping them off to Hiarupa. And so, the staff has spent some time investigating this, and they have a report. So, Brian, if you could give us a brief summary, and we'll consider your recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian Brower. Brian Brower, Assistant City Manager. As you mentioned, the past practice was using a, a third-party service provider to auction off the vehicles. And with council's direction, we've explored three, three options, each with its own advantages and disadvantages. The first was a live, in-person auction. The second is an online auction platform that would be administered by city staff and which the vehicles would be kept locally, and potential buyers would be able to come look at them at a location here in the city and bid on them electronically. And then the, the third option is hiring a full, full-service auction provider, a full, you know, a third party, just like we have in the past, in order to hand those vehicles off to them and, and have them, actually, auction them off. What staff came up with is actually a hybrid recommendation where select turnkey vehicles would be auctioned off using the in-house option, where we would place those vehicles for sale online on a nationally advertised auction platform. And then, uh, the public would have the opportunity to bid on those. And then for the remaining vehicles that are less desirable, we recommend sending those off to J.J. Kane for, to take advantage of their full-service function.
You've identified about six vehicles that are not in the undesirable category that could realistically be up for auction?
That's correct.
And, um, okay, it looks, it looks like they're pretty nice vehicles. I think some local folks may want to bid on them, you never know. Questions?
Yeah, when we do your hybrid with the six cars that are running and have tires on them, how, how much more do you, do we make than if we just all sent them to the same place?
It, it's difficult to estimate the, what the sale price would be, how the sale price would be different.
I mean, percentage of profit or something.
There would be, what we anticipate is for, for us to prepare a vehicle and manage the sale using city staff time and using our contractual fleet services folks to do some of the work, probably be about a $500 per vehicle on average to, to, to put them on the platform, get them ready for sale, put them on the platform, and then follow through with the transaction. With the, the full third-party service, it's a percentage. So, um, it's, and it's 2.5% plus some ancillary services for transporting the vehicles and removing the decals and that type of thing. And so, for a vehicle that's, I would say, $10,000, for, for a vehicle with that value, you're probably looking at maybe a $500 cost versus 250 to sell them in-house versus on the outside. So, it's a little more expensive to sell them using our in-house services because it takes, takes some additional staff effort.
And then, then when the sale is made, do, do, do city staff have to go through and figure out how to transfer and do all?
Staff would have to handle the title transfer and arrange for delivery of the vehicle, you know, for someone to come pick it up, that type of thing, yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm going to follow up on those questions if I can. I, I, I'm trying to get a comparison of those fees. You say it's 2.5%. Let's say on a 10th, is, is an average cost about 10,000 is what we're calculating, or less?
It might be a little high. I think that number's a little high. That would be the upper end typically of the vehicles that we sell. We, we keep vehicles for a long time typically and kind of use them.
Well, on our, let, let's have one of our average, let's do an average.
Average, maybe 6,000 or 8,000.
Okay, and how, what would the fee on that?
It'd be 2.5%. Using the third-party service that we're proposing, it would be...
Be 2.5%?
2.5% plus, probably around $120 for transportation and decal removal.
So, what does that come out to, the cost to the city? Do you know offhand?
I think it's around $320.
$320 to sell, to, to get rid of the, using city staff, what's our cost?
We think it's around 500.
Okay, does that include legal?
Doesn't include, include...
Does it include staff time?
It includes some staff time.
Well, if you calculated all the staff time and legal, wha, what would be? I mean, have, have you done that analysis?
Number we came up with when we sort of made some, some guesstimates about how much time it would take for each specific task between city staff and the fleet... time it would take for each specific task between city staff and the fleet service provider, it's probably in the neighborhood of $700, maybe five.
Okay, now, on the question of selling the vehicles off, the worst vehicles, is there a concern about, oh, I'm going to skip that. How do you calculate that $700?
Well, the 500 was calculating a certain number of minutes for somebody to give, like, basically give a tour of the area where the vehicles are so the public could come in and take a look at them. A few minutes, or maybe 15 minutes, to deal with title transfer at the end of the transaction. 15 minutes or 30 minutes to meet with the member of the public after the transaction to actually hand them off the vehicle. So we kind of broke it out into tasks and made an attempt...
And who would do this? Who knows how to do the title transfer?
Well, we don't have anybody in-house that this is their specialty, but there are many people out there that have done this type of thing with their own personal vehicles.
Okay.
Take it to AAA.
Take it to AAA? Well, you could, I guess, yeah. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, is that figure a low end or high end or an average cost, do you think?
Let's call it an average. I'd like to call it an average.
Let me ask you this. How much time have you spent? If you calculate all the time you've spent on this project right now, is that included in the cost of this selling them off?
That is not.
And what would that be?
I've probably spent eight hours of staff time and a few hours of subordinate staff.
Okay, and a few hours of other staff. All right, I'm just trying to get, see if there's real value in this or whether we're going down a road of, I mean, I'm not sure. So the other thing, when this all started, I think it was couched as we knew somebody that did this and they said it would be a good thing to do for the city. I think that's how it was pitched here, wasn't it?
I think it's the, it was the company that we've always used to basically unload our fleet when they get old and unusable. It's the same company that, I guess, traditionally bids, right? Is that the same J.J. Kane? Or is that another, was that another company? When we heard this matter a month, a month and a half ago, there was a company that was in the business and we have, my understanding was we traditionally used them to unload our cars.
Yeah.
The cars, the fleet went to Yerupa where there was a big auction for dealers and the public.
Yeah.
And at that time, we were told we could get about, and it was an estimate, of around $160,000 or so. I think that number sticks in my mind, 150, 160, 65 maybe, right around 160. And, but it was an estimate.
Okay.
At the time, we thought, well, if we're unloading 30 vehicles, many of them have 30,000 miles, 40,000 miles, Ford F-150 trucks. Some of them look like, you know, someone starting out of high school that needs a car or someone that just wants an affordable buggy might say, I'd like to bid on that car. So the initial concept was, is there some easy way we can simply take those 20 vehicles and let our citizens have access to them?
But I thought you had a friend that...
No, I had a friend that was in the car business and they, I thought they did auctions, but they don't.
Okay.
So we, I guess, staff looked at other options for...
Okay. But I thought the direction was to talk to your, to the friend to see if they could do it because they thought that it could be done cheaper.
The person in the business, it's a local, local guy that's CFO of a car dealership. His contact really wasn't in the auction business. They'd done it, but not really.
Okay.
And they kind of declined, after talking to them for a while, I think Brian concluded they weren't, they weren't going to make it happen. So he looked at other options. And again...
Let me finish my question, if I could.
Well, okay, just let me finish with the, because by the way, a little background. The concept was simply, can we reasonably and affordably offer these to our citizens?
Yeah.
And what I'm hearing in the staff report is we're not getting as much value as we thought and it's taking some time. So, you know, I think our citizens may be interested, but they may not, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I don't know. I'm trying to figure out if it is. It may, I mean, maybe there's only a few cars that, you know, we auction off or, but let me, let me get to that point. I understand a lot of these cars don't have a lot of value and that we could never, probably not auction them off to our, to our community and it would be imprudent to auction them off.
I think that there's, maybe there's a home for every car. I, I'm not in the used car business really, so it's hard.
You are now.
Actually, yeah, stand corrected. But I, we did get a rough appraisal on the vehicles and it was kind of surprisingly low with the numbers that came back. And so I think the highest value vehicle in the entire lot was estimated at $13,000. Most of them were well under 10. Many of them were like $3,000 or $5,000. So there's not, I don't think there's...
But let me ask you, to the point, those $3,000 to $5,000 cars, would we want to sell them to a resident of this community and then hear from them two months later that the car broke down? Are you going to handle the after?
That's certainly a concern. These are used vehicles and they've been, they've served the city well, but they're not in the best of condition.
And, yeah, that's what worries me really, and I don't know if you have the same worries or came to that conclusion. I mean, if you, if we sell vehicles and they break down and even if it's our best vehicle and we believe it to be our best vehicle and it breaks down the next week, what's our liability?
Well, legally, we're probably fine. The deal's probably as is. There are requirements when you sell a vehicle in the state of California. The seller is responsible for making sure it's safe.
Yeah.
And making sure that it passes smog. And so if there's something outside those parameters, I would suspect that the city would not be liable for those expenses.
Okay.
But we would be liable for making...
Is there a certain number of vehicles that you think at this point, it might be, to get to what we were trying to get to, that we could sell to the public with little risk?
I prefer not to speculate about the risk, but there, what we did is we went through and selected a quarter of the vehicles, well, six vehicles out of 22 that seemed most viable compared to the others for this type of operation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. You know, the six vehicles that the staffs identified, they may be of interest, but it's a 2013 Ford Focus with 44,000 miles, a Ford 2015 F-350 utility with 38,000 miles, a 2010 Ford utility with 88,000 miles, a Ford F-150 truck with 46,000 miles, Ford 14 450 truck with 28,000 miles, a Ford Focus 35,000 miles, 2007 Focus. These are the, sort of the cream of the crop, and if you sold those for an average of 10, you're talking 60 grand. We, if we sold the entire fleet six weeks ago, they were, we were told we'd get roughly 160. So somehow in those other 15 or 17, 18 vehicles, we got another 100,000 equity somewhere. I'm not sure how that works, but clearly, we're not in the car business and I appreciate the time and energy you've put into it, but I'm just not sure with what the dollars we have here in the staff report that it's...
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I would suggest that we, because we want access for residents to know that these cars are available, that we put it on our, on our website in the city, have a link to this auction house. We can do the same thing with our social media. Hey, we've got an auction coming up with some great, well, some cars anyway, from the, you know, from the city. And we have a, you know...
Guaranteed not to break down.
Yeah, we just, we just give them a link to go to the auction site there, you know, so they can look at it and maybe, you know, you do bid online a lot of times on these cars also. Most people want to kick the tires, but we just advertise that we've got some cars that the city's getting rid of and here's your opportunity to go bid.
It's not a huge moneymaker, but the idea was if we're going to ship our cars off to Riverside County, let's let our local folks at least look at them and have a shot at buying them. Any other comments?
No, I, I would just say, I think they're going to have the opportunity. It will be online. Maybe we just put, you know, the auction house on our website and let it go at that.
That's correct. The auction house that we're recommending does offer the service to have a customized webpage where our vehicles, the city's vehicles, would be the only thing on that page and we could frame that in on our website when they're up for sale and advertise via social media, social media channels.
And then they would have to drive out there to pick up the vehicle if they buy it?
They would have to pick it up there, but they could...
But they do all the paperwork, they do the smog, they do the transportation, they do everything.
Yeah, the transportation is the only possibility that maybe it will yield more revenue through the in-house auction. Otherwise, I think it's money-losing stuff. But it's a, as an experiment, I'm fine with doing it just one time to see how it goes. But I do hope that there are two almost identical vehicles. We can send one to the JJ, the auction service, online service vendor, and then another one for in-house. Maybe we can get some data from, to compare them and see which way is better for the future.
I just think we're not a used car sales lot. We're a city council. We are city staff and we need to focus and stay in our lane of the city business and this is a great thing to contract out to do and they can do it well. We can still make, I mean, it's, is the juice worth the squeeze to make an extra $500 or just get net even or even lose? I mean, we're so close within that margin. I just, I think we, we let someone else take this over. I like the idea of having the option for our residents to, you know, have first look at it on a website. That's great, but our staff has enough to do.
Yeah, our staff clearly not the use...
Can we still get one of those big blow-up things?
Oh, yeah.
Vehicles like that?
I have a motion that...
Well, yeah, any other comments?
Right outside.
Does your motion include transferring all the vehicles to our auctioneer with access to our websites where people can bid on it?
That's exactly our...
I'll second that. Second?
That's my motion.
Mr. Mayor, just if I could ask Councilmember Cabral, part of our surplus policy is to designate something as surplus to allow the sale to go forward. So I would recommend that you make that same motion, but do so by editing Resolution 25115 to delete Section 2 and delete the, from Section 6 and the staff-managed municipal auction program and then add in the website information.
That's my motion, exactly. I don't know if you heard me.
Thank you.
Got to listen.
Adam Clerk, is that clear enough for you?
Clear.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
A second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item is a wildlife prevention program, update on the current activities and proposed extension of the city's pilot goat grazing project and expansion of weed abatement program, including a request to award a new professional service contractor, E. Stewart and Associates, Inc., for weed abatement services relating to supplemental appropriations and making findings on the California Environmental Quality Act. We have a staff report. Your staff report was rather lengthy. Can you kind of summarize for us your three proposals?
Yes, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Adam Matamian, Community Development Director. I've got a PowerPoint presentation that goes through this. There's a lot here and I appreciate the council's patience in reading that report. I'll go through this PowerPoint quickly and would be more than happy to entertain any questions on specifics at the end. There we are. So our wildfire prevention program, this is a, this is something that our emergency management function is, is taking over and includes all of the facets that I'll be talking about here today. Fundamentally, the city had a few aspects of city operations that we would consider as part of a wildfire prevention program. One of those is a contract with OCFA. Another one, to a smaller extent in the past, was our weed abatement program. What we're doing right now is really looking at this from a global perspective and starting with program planning, which includes an application for a grant that staff submitted a few months ago to create a community wildfire protection plan. That plan really identifies the fire risks to various areas of the city and identifies priorities for projects to address those concerns. Additionally, some of our other program planning at this stage relates to an application for a, to become a fire risk reduction community as identified by CAL FIRE. That designation identifies that the city is doing certain things to address wildfire prevention and that designation helps us with grant funding in the future. Also in the staff report, there's some information about the Firewise Community Program. That comes, that's a neighborhood-by-neighborhood designation, but our community wildfire protection plan would help communities achieve that designation if they're not able to do that work on their own. Beyond program planning, we're also talking about program projects and the staff report includes a number of those programs. The first being an extension of the pilot goat grazing project in both the short and the near term. The second is a longer-term fuel management program that we are applying for a hazard mitigation grant funding for. And then the final aspect is an expansion of the weed abatement program, which was actually directed by council for staff to bring back. And so we're doing that at this time, even though the weed abatement program doesn't actually kick off until next, late, late winter, spring. So the goat grazing project in the short term, one of the staff considerations for council tonight is to extend the goat grazing project in the short term. And this was an item that the city manager brought to the council back in June. We're bringing it back now to expand the scope of that a little bit, to extend the program until March 31 of 2026. This would be, this would require a request for proposals as the, as this work can be provided by a few providers, service providers, that do this work. And then staff is, is looking at a supplemental appropriation of up to $100,000 for that. In the near term, staff is working on a CAL FIRE grant through the wildfire prevention grant program that would further expand that. However, the council does have the option of not doing the short term if we want to wait for this near term. However, we're not going to know about the status of this grant application, which was already submitted until the end of this year. So in order to provide a little bit of opportunity over the next few months to provide additional goat grazing services, that short-term option is provided. The near-term goat grazing grant application, which was submitted on August 6, is targeting this area of public property. It's generally the, the property at the very bottom is the Vista Hermosa Sports Park and this is the publicly owned open space that is north of that and north of the target. For the longer-term project under the hazard mitigation grant, this is an application for $8.55 million. There is a city commitment of 20, of a 25% match. One of the resolutions that staff is requesting consideration of tonight includes a city commitment for that 25% match. However, it's not, it's not entirely monetary. There are a number of ways that that match can be met and city staff is tailoring our application to reduce the monetary funding for that match and instead focusing on in-kind services and labor. That includes city staff time working on this and similar activities. This program would... working on this and similar activities. This program would cover public and private property. And so on the areas of private property, we would be looking for partnerships with HOAs and private property owners for them to contribute 25% of the work that this grant would provide for the areas that they own. Additionally, volunteer efforts, like the volunteer activities that we had earlier in this year to clear out some areas of open space, those types of volunteer efforts can count towards these types of matches, especially when we've got a program of 200 or so volunteers. That time as a resource adds up pretty quickly. Additionally, supplemental grants, such as the CAL FIRE wildfire prevention grant that I mentioned earlier, could also support this 25% match. If there are any additional fees, the city council could consider applying general funds to that. However, like I said, staff is trying to tailor this so that there is a very, very little impact on the general fund. And then this program covers a very large area of the city. With the expansion of our very high, high and moderate fire hazard severity zones, we are looking at identifying those areas of the wildland urban interface that are going to need to be addressed, a little bit more than they have in the past. This program is looking at, I'll say, three treatments. There are some purple lines that are the areas of the open space that abut development, and we'd be looking at that area as a fuel reduction, severe fuel reduction to the extent that we can get those projects completed. There are some red lines along some of the major corridors in the city, and those would be buffers from the street to reduce the chances of fires being caused by vehicles or pedestrians, things of that nature. And then the green areas are areas where we would be targeting specific invasive plant reduction, high combustibility.
Is that you talking? Whose PowerPoint presentation is this?
This is, I mean, my lip syncing is really good tonight.
You're like a ventriloquist.
It's amazing. It's amazing. So the green areas, we're not talking about a clear cutting of our open space areas. It's a targeted, non-native fuel reduction in those areas. And then the weed abatement program, this is one of the aspects of the city's fire prevention activities that we've had for multiple decades. It involves the clearing of city-owned parcels, reservoirs, pumping stations. It also involves the clearing of private lots with an opportunity for private property owners to address their own lots first. The expansion of the fire hazard severity zones has increased the need for this service, and it does come with an increase in cost. The costs are a factor of the expansion of those zones, just rising contractor pricing generally, but also the enhanced fire prevention needs of the community. Ed Stewart and Associates was identified as uniquely qualified to provide this service. They are located here in the city, and so their response time, as far as their geographic and logistical advantages, apply. They also provide technical expertise doing this type of fuel management work, not only for the city of San Clemente, but a number of our neighboring jurisdictions as well over the past few decades. They have an established relationship with OCFA, who has a very large part in identifying the areas that our weed abatement program needs to address. They've got a proven track record. They have specialized equipment. And in staff's research and previous RFPs, we've not identified anybody that can provide the private property abatement services that they do. And so for all of those reasons, staff is requesting that we enter into a new contract with Ed Stewart and Associates in the amount of $256,060, which represents an increase of $96,060 for the weed abatement program. Half of those costs are for the work on the city-owned, I'll say, structured properties, like the pumping stations, reservoir sites. The other half of that money is actually to increase our budget for the OCFA-recommended defensible space areas. And these are areas of publicly-owned property where we have vegetation that is within 100 feet of privately-owned structures. The, just due to the increase in the fire hazard severity zones, we had to take a deep dive into what areas are actually covered by this program, increase those areas, and so that's where these costs come from. And so with that, staff recommends that the council adopt Resolutions 25116, 25117, and 25118, and determine that the, these items are exempt from CEQA.
A quick question. On the second, the second component, the hazard mitigation grant, where we're going to be getting some in-kind contribution credits, the grant hasn't been granted yet, obviously. So any of the work that we did early in the year when we had 200-plus volunteers out over two weekends, that wouldn't be captured at this point, correct?
That is not captured. We will not know...
Future activities will, but not the past at all.
Future will. I will say that that did serve a very large purpose. We did rely on the work that the city has already done, especially with the volunteers on their own time, as part of the rationale for, to justify that the city does care about this issue and is taking steps to actively address it.
Thank you. Questions?
No, I just...
On fire represented?
Yeah, no, I just think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the comprehensive approach that we thought in dealing with the hazard mitigation, the goats, the weed abatement, the OCT.
Yeah. Any questions of staff before we have public comments?
Well, it's...
We're not in discussions.
It's leading up to a question.
Take your time.
The OCFA defensible spaces, you've covered everything. The only thing that I see that's missing is our relationship with the Marine Corps base. There's a strip of land there that used to be state parks, and I don't believe it is no longer state parks. It's actually gone back to the Marines. But it's an area where I think we need to create a defensible space, not us, not at our cost, but working with the Marines to, along the border with them, to address that. Have you worked on that at all, or have you looked at that?
So the Marine Corps base has a relatively newer emergency manager. They organized a meeting with all of their surrounding jurisdictions a couple weeks ago at their EOC, their Emergency Operations Center in Camp Pendleton. Myself and our emergency management specialists both attended that meeting. So we've engaged in communications with the Marine Corps as far as emergency management's concerned. Their fire department is a very large part of that. And so I'm more than happy to follow up on that, and I do see that as a need.
I think I've had communications before where they've expressed at least an interest, now particularly that it's no longer state parks, but Marine Corps land along our border. I think it'd be good to follow up on that. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions of staff before we hear from the public?
I have a few questions. For the $518,535 CAL FIRE, the wildfire prevention grant, you said we will hear back from them by the end of the year?
We anticipate a December decision.
Okay, so it's about four months, less than four months away. Towards the end of your presentation, you explained that the expanded defensive space, you want to create the, you want to reduce, do the fuel modification if our, if the city-owned open space is within 100 feet of residential structure or any other structure. Now, when they did their site plan, they choose not to give themselves the defensive space on their own land. How did that work in the past? Did they have to ask for us, for the permission to clear the vegetation within 100 feet from their structure, and then pay us to do that? How did it work in the past, and how is it different now?
So based on the pattern of development and the timing of development, it makes a difference in terms of how properties interface with publicly-owned open space. So newer developments will have a fuel modification plan around them, and so this issue is less in Talega, Forester Ranch, and Ranch of San Clemente. It's mostly in the older areas of town where there were development standards allowed for a 10-foot rear yard setback. Somebody built up to that setback, and behind their property is open space. OCFA only requires that defensible space be provided up to somebody's property line. However, the city has, for as long as I've been involved in this program, provided that additional defensible space behind those types of properties where the vegetation exists on the city's property. Generally speaking, it's maybe 10 to 30 feet, 40 feet of vegetation that needs to be addressed. It's not 100 feet. We're not providing all of the defensible space from the structure to 100 feet away. It's just that portion of the vegetation that sits on publicly-owned property.
Okay, thank you. Can we also go back to the near-term project map? Yeah, on this map, they're all publicly-owned open spaces. So as you just said, around the Talega, these open spaces, city-owned open spaces are quite a distance from the developments. They're probably about 150 feet, plus or minus. So they already have defensive open space there. So I don't really see a lot of a place that we need to provide the extra defensible open space, with the exception of at the very bottom where you see the Pacifica. Those homes are right abutting the property line of a city-owned open space. But that, that two small areas, they have been addressed by the weed abatement program. So on the whole exterior edge, I don't see places that we need to go in and clear more vegetation. So the only place I see that we can go in right away is along the Lapata, as well as Vista Hermosa, and a short segment of Caya Saluda. Because they are only 50 feet wide on each side, those acreages are limited. I'm estimating that they add up to somewhere between 20 to 30 acres. The rest of the open space, we still need to do a CEQA review. And also, we need to do a biological study to identify the potential environmentally sensitive area. And how long does, will that take?
So you're correct on that. The grant actually allows, once a contract or the city gives authorization to actually do the work, the grant allows the city up to 12 months to complete the CEQA work, once we get approval for that. The program, however, is not designed, in this CAL FIRE wildfire prevention grant program, is not designed for defensible space. It's designed to reduce invasive and non-native species. And we've got a lot of thistle that is running behind the target especially. And while we have identified 348 acres total, the grant amount is geared to cover two growing cycles. And so we're factoring about half of that cost each year, and the, half of the $515,000 a year does not cover goat grazing for 348 acres. So we know that this will be spot treatments.
Okay.
The, as far as the biological reports, that's absolutely something that we're working on, to identify those specific areas. But we want to get the grant funding before we engage in that type of work.
Right. For the request for $100,000 to act as a gap-filling project, we only have three months.
Is there a question, Mr. Wu?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
We only have three months. What can be done within that three months? Because it's unlikely we're gonna, we're gonna complete the biological study or maybe CEQA review. So from my viewpoint, the only place we can work on is along the streets. But, and we only have three months of the gap. What can be done within that three months?
Well, for the short-term $100,000 request, it would not, the area contemplated would not be all of this area. It would be a much more targeted approach, closer to the Vista Hermosa Sports Park where the pilot program started. And if, just looking at the lot north of Target, we would be able to address quite a bit of that. The reason that staff has increased the scope of the project to cover until March is because the CAL FIRE wildfire prevention grant, we're not going to know until December. That's not going to give us enough time to start in January. The growing season for thistles is really in the late January to March timeframe, and so we want to make sure that we have funds to support that timeframe.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
No.
Okay, no questions. We have members of the public who would like to speak. Let's hear from them.
Yes, Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Mike Kay.
And after that, was that just two? Okay, thank you.
This, I'm glad that Mr. Otamian brought up the cost of volunteers. Even though we had volunteers and donations from Denalt's Hardware and from Lowe's, there was still a cost to the city of $25,000 when the residents cleared basically over 90% of transportation corridor agencies, TCA land, which we should have billed them for because we cleared out their land. And so, but prior to that, I did reach out to Jen Turner, who is the supervisor or senior analyst for, in the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I forwarded that email to Mr. Hall, and I think it was Councilmember Wu, a while ago. Because even though if something is CEQA exempt, like this project that you cleared out on TCA land, it still does not say that, you still, I mean, you still have to abide by the California Endangered Species Act. You can't get around that. So Jen Turner advised, basically encouraged the city to avoid conservation easements and mitigated lands. And I think that's very important to keep in mind, that you can't do that. You can't go in and clear land. And it's very specific. She also forwarded me the Laguna Beach, their fuel modification plan, which they also use goats, and their, the initial environmental study checklist from the city of Laguna Beach, because it really shows, looking into the biological resources, what groups they basically work with, in conjunction with the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And then they also look at the geotechnical concerns, geology and soils, because there is problems. Our land is catastrophic land formation and moderate land formation, so it's unstable land. So if you're going to have people go into that area, there are... So if you're going to have people go into that area, there are concerns regarding the stability of that. But as far as, I just want to keep in mind that, that this is a, so many things are jam-packed in this agenda item and it should have been, I think, separated. I, as far as the, as spending $100,000 for the goats, I don't know if there was a breakdown of how, why is it $100,000? And I would have liked to see a breakdown. More importantly, that map is in the green alignment and I should have reached out to Kathleen Ward and Michelle Schumacher and Sir Frieter because that's in the green alignment and they're subject to EIR.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Mike Kay.
Mayor, Mayor Protam, city council members. I would just want to ask that you approve this and that you follow through. The people of San Clemente are overwhelmingly in favor of this project. It is something that the vast majority of people east of the freeway would like and would like soon. It is an existential threat, not only fire, but the loss of the ability to attain insurance, fire insurance on homes. There are entire neighborhoods in the backside of Talega that are no longer able to access insurance for their homes in the free market. They can only go through the fair program through the state, which only ensures up to $200 square foot. So basically their homes are no longer going to go up in value. It's a serious concern for our town. So I, I, I think that everybody here understands the consequences of all of this. There is a lot of momentum that we've got going. We need to maintain that momentum and to value it. A small monetization of this project will go a long way. I saw a lot of inconsistencies were brought up over the last couple of speakers. Section four, for example, already has an EIR done. It's already done. We already have that. We've already done these things. We did this with Ultra Systems. We contracted out. Amir did it six months ago. So no, we can go in. We will not be in violation of these things. There's some inconsistencies that were brought up. Nonetheless, I want to take a look at what we're getting for $100,000. That's a lot of money. It's only 38 acres we're talking about, right? Today, I was at the Southern California Veterinarian Hospital in San Marcos where I established relationships with two goat vets who know all about our product, project. They're excited to come up. They were taking a look at a sick goat I had today. $450 I set out today for blood work, fecal work, everything else. She has anemia and she probably won't live. She had a birth problem two weeks ago. But that's a development. We need, if we're going to have goats, we need a vet. Where's the vet? Do they have rattlesnake antivenom? They do. Found out today. What are the consequences? How do you do that? How long do you have to wait to get them over there? How long is the drive to get out there? Two days, three days ago, I was at the property where we're grazing and the park rangers came by. And we had a long talk. How's it going with park rangers? What do you guys see about the vet, the goats? Are you understanding when to come out? Are you finding the kids that are out here? What about the drones that are buzzing the goats? Are you guys aware of that? Are you guys communicating about that? So the security side of it is being developed. I could go on and on about all the different aspects of development of goats in our community that are being, taken care of in this pilot project and how much value and how important these things are, regardless of who raises the goats in the future. That's what we're getting for 100 grand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move the staff recommendation.
One, two, and three?
Yes.
Resolutions 25, 116, 117, and 118?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded.
I have some comment.
Discussion on the, on the motion?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make some discussion. I fully support item two and item three. I have some reservation on item one. When we, if we want to request, send out a request of proposal and say upfront, we, we're willing to spend $100,000, then what are we, what are we getting back from the proposals? Is that a number of acreage? Is that a, a, a many of service? But the scope of work should be identified and decided by the city. So typical request for proposal is that we create a scope of service. We send out for bidding and they come back with a dollar amount and then we pick the best one. This looks like putting the cart in front of a horse. And I want, and I think also, $100,000-
You're against the motion? Would you like to make a substitute motion?
Well, I'm making my comment.
Well, comments addressing the motion. We have a motion on the floor, so the topic of discussion is the motion pending. So go ahead with your comments.
Well, yeah. So my recommendation is that we, we send out a request for proposal and ask people to submit their response and give us a number per acre. And then that will allow the staff to develop a plan and to identify where the work needs to be done. Then because we have a per-unit price and then the total price just to go with that. We start with maybe easily identifiable area that we can go in to work right away. And then we don't know how much it is. The total area is 300 something acres. Maybe we can get work on 100 acres. Maybe we can get to work on 50 acres. It depends on the sequoia view. It depends on the biological study. As I just mentioned, there's no, there's not a much extra defensible space on this edge. Maybe we can create a fire break on the ridge. We, at this moment, we don't know much. So I think having a unit price is a better way because that will allow people to come back with a price and we can compare and pick the one.
Okay, good, good point.
So just to be clear, you're, you're proposing a friendly amendment that instead of adopting all of section one, instead of doing it as a request for proposal, you, instead it's a request for proposal per acre?
Yeah, I, instead of saying, we want to spend $100,000, what can you do for us? We send out a proposal, say, we have this piece of land and we want to do something. It's, that detailed scope of work is still not clearly identified now, but you can start, probably start working with maybe 30 acres and it can't be much more-
Gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor with a second. There's been discussions.
Can I address this?
Well, there's no, there's no other motion.
We've ended, we've kind of ended our conversation, our discussion point. There's a pending motion.
I make a substitute, I make a substitute motion.
Can I call a question?
There's a substitute motion pending on the floor.
I make a substitution, substitute motion that we approve item two and a three. And regarding item one, we send out a request for proposal to give us a per-unit price.
And there's a motion on the floor?
I will second this just because I have a question for city manager on it and then-
We've, we've kind of concluded our discussion and questions and we have, we have motions pending. If it's a brief question and it's directly-
A brief question is all.
Very brief, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I heard you say, I heard you say something, but I didn't hear you say it fully when, when this was coming up. I just wanted to hear what you said.
Yeah, exactly what he said. I think what he's leading towards is a unit price rather than a project price. And if you want us to modify the request for proposal to, to be a unit price, we can do that. I, I think that that's what he was leading towards, is a unit price rather than a project.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, you've seconded the motion, Mark?
Yeah.
I thought you did.
You want to make a friendly? So, yeah, so this is a substitute motion that we're doing three, two, and number one with a unit price instead of a project price.
You're right.
Can I call the question, Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, okay.
Can I call a question?
Yeah, there's a motion and a sec, there's a motion and a substitute motion pending. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion? If none, then we'll call for a vote first on the substitute motion of Mr. Wu's, seconded by Mr. Enmire. And how do you, how do we vote on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No? That fails three to two. We'll go back to the original motion, which is on, pending and let's have a motion on the, a vote on the original motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five oh. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is, let me look here, item 10F, consideration of a joint, of joining Supervisor Foley's South County Beach Coalition Committee. Mark, you asked that this be agendized and it's on the agenda.
Great, I'll, I'll just start off with the conversation and say that this is on the agenda because there's a new coalition coming in to, as the states join Supervisor Foley's South County Beach Coalition Committee. This committee is going to be in charge of distributing $300 million worth of sand and beach and other things, going along with OCTA and other things. They are going to be directing this. The question is whether we should have a, someone on our council on that committee. My opinion is that it would benefit the city to have a voice in that committee, whether you, we have trepidations of, of this or that or other details of it. I think it's better to have, to have a voice at the table than to be served at the table. So, yeah.
I'll have a question. Where do you come up with the $300 million being assigned to this committee and not to the Orange County?
Transportation.
Sorry, for the OCTA, but this committee is going to be moving like, and making recommendations on a lot of that money.
Do we have a public speaker, by the way? How many? Three?
Well, let's hear from the public speaker.
Okay, any, any, just on the item coming up, did anybody have anything they want to add before we hear from the public? Okay, then let's hear from the public.
Okay, Alyssa Nipuri followed by Amanda Quintanilla followed by Mike Kay. Alyssa?
Hello, Mayor and Councilman. I'm Alyssa Nipuri. I'm Supervisor Foley's Deputy Chief of Staff. I have the lovely pleasure of covering housing and homelessness for the supervisor, but today I also am covering my other area, sand, which somehow takes up just as much time as housing and homelessness for my portfolio. Councilman and Mayor Protam Enmire was correct. The goal of this commission is to take all of us out of our silos and have us all work together as one. I appreciate the title as the supervisor staffer. It's saying Supervisor Foley, South County Beach Coalition. But really, this coalition's bigger than one political person, one politician or one ideology. It is about action, doing actions that have been recommended for more than a decade by the County of Orange and the Army Corps of Engineers to create a coalition like this that will bring all the landowners and stakeholders at the table to discuss how we can make sure our tax dollars go further and we can collaborate similarly to what we did to, with Sandag. And I appreciate San Clemente's leadership in joining RBSP III and being part of that project. We would like to replicate that success and have an Orange County-focused and Oceanside Litoral Cell section of Orange County-focused coalition with the South County Beach Coalition that will last far longer than all of our careers because it will be something that helps guide how we restore our beaches from now until we don't have to keep restoring our beaches. And finally, my final point is that we have no money ask, which I know is probably your biggest concern. The supervisor really cares about making sure that the county steps up in this moment and becomes a leader in solving the beach erosion crisis. And so we have committed to, to creating a staff position and hiring the staff position and funding the staff position for this commission because we feel that sand doesn't really know jurisdictional boundaries. So the county, as the big old county, we can step up and take this action and help our cities who've been doing most of the heavy lifting and trying to restore our beaches. So we're here to just simply ask that you join us, join us in conversation and, and be excited that we're going to help place 500,000 cubic yards of sand with OCTA and then hopefully many more hundred thousands cubic yards of sand with just the coalition. So, thank you.
I have a question for Mr.-
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for Mr. DePore. I think it's within my scope to ask.
She's representing the county supervisor, so it's a perfect, go right ahead.
Okay, so a few months ago, when we, our sand initiative was on the ballot, your boss came out against it and said, you don't need this, I've got all this sand. I remember at the press conference, you know, you spoke in, in that direction also. And I, I, I think she must be confused because the only sand that looks like we're going to get is railroad for train revetment. When you go back to your boss, explain to her that sand was going to go where people put umbrellas on the beach. And I haven't seen any indication that that sand that she's promised is a-
Was there a question?
Yes, there, there is going to be a question. Has arrived. So with that in mind and now with this new clarification, are you committed to seeing that San Clemente possibly receives sand for recreation and not just for piling up against the railroad tracks?
We are 100% committed to making sure that sand gets onto our beaches and we're able to support our beaches because our beaches are a third of Orange County's tourism economy. Every dollar that we invest in restoring our beaches comes back with $3,000 of spending from visitors and tourists and locals. So it's very important that we keep our beaches healthy. I cannot speak on to the supervisor's personal political opinion, but I can say that we, we did secure the $300 million for the four hotspot areas for the coastal rail. And without the supervisor, we would not have had any sand within that entire equation. And now we're, we have a majority of sand in there. I think it's like a five to one sand to riprap ratio, if I remember correctly. So we're making sure that it's not just sand to layer within the riprap, it will also be sand that people can sit in. So it's both. That said, that is not enough. I believe Save Our Beaches, San Clemente said that we need 7 million cubic yards of sand. We were successful in getting sand in the Northern County portion of our district. We have a good program that was restarted in 2019 with Army Corps of Engineers for the Huntington Beach, Seal Beach, Newport Beach cell to get that regularly restored. Congressman Levin brought that similarly down in San Clemente. So now we want to make sure we have all arms working together and we can all move in one motion instead of the city doing one thing, the county doing another, and then our activists doing a third. So I appreciate you bringing that up and giving me a chance to brag about my boss's economic policy.
Thank you. Any other, next public speaker?
Amanda Quintanilla.
I'm so glad that Alyssa Nipuri was here. And I've been involved with sand issues for quite some time now. And pretty much at the same time that Susie Whitelaw came here and spoke, we, I've spoken and testified before the Senate Subcommittee on Low Sand Rail Corridor. I've also submitted my public comment when Andy Hall, our city manager, and Daryl Johnson went to the OC, went to the Senate Subcommittee on April 29th. And it was discussed that sand nourishment was very imperative with, with a revetment, whether it's a revetment or some kind of structure that sand should go, should be accompanied by that. However, one of the things that I have seen that, that certain groups, as Ms. Nipuri had stated, that they do are, they do speak in their own silos and this is a way that can give them a voice and a seat at the table for Save Our Beaches, Bring Back Our Beaches and other residents to join in and to speak. This is not a political thing and, and this is about working collaboratively together. It's not, let's bash on one representative for having a view on a tax measure or whatever. But that, that's not right. It's, it's being basically working across the, the political lines, working for the betterment of our town, which means bringing more sand replenishment. Mr. Hall is sitting right there and he sat and spoke for, I think it was the May California Coast Commission where Dr. Kate Hucklebridge, who's the executive director, granted 240,000 cubic yards of sand to go into Mariposa Point. So we're all trying to work collaboratively and it's, it's something that I've spoken at the OCTA meetings. I've, you know, sent, sent public comments regarding the OC Parks environmental study, our nature-based coastal resilience study, so has Susie Whitelaw. And I, I think that this is an opportunity to have a seated table to see, to express our concerns of what we really want, to restore our beaches with sand. Also, I wanted to, to mention is that I, I think unfortunately, Dr., I didn't reach out to Dr. Susie Whitelaw to be here today, but I think that this can work and I am really hopeful that this, because, you know, these studies that the OC Parks did, our nature-based coastal resiliency and the OCTA's coastal rail resiliency study should all go into one and, and basically try to come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Next speaker?
Mike Kay.
The last thing I want is those studies rolled in and then we're in there as well and there's one big narrative that rolls along and just tells us how it's going to be. I don't feel comfortable with the promises that we're going to get all this sand and then we get all these boulders dumped- then we get all these boulders dumped all over the place. We can go out right by where I go to the beach, you can see boulders falling all into the sea. OCTA has not been transparent. They have been something I, I scratch my head. I don't get it. We just need sand, we need sand, we need sand, we need sand. Yet I see these reports from OCTA and everything. Supervisor Foley is a good person. She works hard. I have respect for her. I have been to many of her meetings. I have talked to her personally. However, I think, given the way this has been going, we need to be a feisty little counter-narrative if we're going to get the little beach town that we want. And I think we need to remain independent, and if we have to kind of be a little thorn once in a while, unfortunately, that kind of feels like the way we're going to have to go, given the fact that it's been promises after promises. We've got boulders after boulders. I don't see any sand coming in. It's not hard to do. I personally drove by a cabazin' the other day out in the desert. I saw bottom dump train cars at a sand quarry right across the street from the Big Dinosaur as you drive out to Palm Springs. It's all right there. That rail goes here, goes right past the dam, but we don't see it. She's a good person. I think she means well. I think she wants power, and we would give a little bit to her. But I don't think she wants power for the sake of power. I think she thinks that's a good way to go forward, like she said, put a seat at the table. But in this case, I don't want to give that up. I think our town needs to be comfortable to push back and say, "No, no, 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 no. We're a surf town. We have Olympics coming. We want big beaches." And, you know, we've got a lot of deals to work with them. We have a great working relationship. You guys know much more about it than I do. But I'm going to ask you, on this case, to not join up respectfully. Thanks.
Any other speakers, Madam Clerk? Okay, gentlemen, any thoughts? Actually, you brought this up. You've made your comment. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I like the idea of, yeah, let's be a thorn. Let's, let's continually speak and advocate for San Clemente and advocate for our beaches and advocate for our sands, but I believe we do that best by being part of this group and speaking up there. It's much easier within the inside to say, "These are our best ways to go forward," rather than yelling from the outside and getting nowhere.
Okay, thank you. Victor?
I would just say that I respect what they're doing, but I think if there was a leader in this, it's been San Clemente in beach restoration. If you look at what's been done over the past few years, we're the ones, San Clemente has put the most sand on their beach, and we did it. We have an organization and a structure. We have a ZANZAR that is one of the best in the world, certainly in the state. I know that the OCTA has hired a new person that's just come to the table, but I think we are actually the leaders. We work closely with the OCTA. We work with the Army Corps of Engineers. There's probably a dozen groups and organizations that we've been working with this past year to make us. So if anything, I mean, if we want to look at a partnership, San Clemente should be the leader of that. We also work closely with Newport Beach and Huntington Beach and other members of the, and I don't think we can leave them out in Orange County if we want to be successful because they have been two of the most successful communities that have restored beach. But they also, the state has an organization. There are a number of organizations, and we're part of all of them. I wish Les Lea was here to summarize some of that. But I think I would welcome, you know, if we think we need that committee, I would welcome the Orange County Supervisor to work with us on the committees that we have already established in the state and in Orange County, rather than creating a new committee.
Thank you. Rick?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything everybody has said. I just, if it's a chance to be a pebble in a shoe, I would like somebody to take that opportunity. I don't see a downside. I mean, we're not giving up any rights or any opportunity to do anything by having a chair at this committee. This committee isn't going to supersede anything we do, and unfortunately, I don't think that the committee is going to really supersede anything that we, either way. I just don't see a downside. I'd like any opportunity for somebody, not necessarily me. I don't think I'm probably the best person for this, but I'd like to see somebody try to hold some people's feet to the fire and any possible opportunity to have a voice and say, "We need, if something's coming and sand's coming, we want it here." And at least stand up and say that, whether they listen to it or not. I just don't see why we are losing anything by doing this. We're not losing any of our power, just sending somebody up there to bitch, piss, and moan and try to get the best for our city.
Yeah, my thoughts on this are that, you know, elected officials do what they do, and our job, everybody supports sand replenishment, everybody, at the city level, the county level. And we do work currently together with other governmental entities. To form another committee, to be a coalition of just the county and the city, to me is another layer of government, another committee, another function of government to do what we're already doing. And Supervisor Foley to suggest this, I appreciate her desire to work with us on sand. I hope she continues to do that. But to create a committee where she is the chair, her staff is the executive director, and under her original proposal, and thank you, Alyssa, for changing what her original proposal was, but the proposal was they hire county staff and the two cities have to pay for it, along with the county. So we pay two thirds, the cities pay two thirds of the cost, but thank you for pulling that part off the agenda. But I think if government officials do their job, they should continue to interact on a local basis. When I look at the proposal, what concerns me a little bit is the, is the direction of it.
Is this proposal, was this distributed?
It was distributed, it was distributed back in April when it first came around. Supervisor Foley sent a letter with a draft, a draft coalition minutes or bylaws where I'm describing, she's the chair, her staff is the executive chair, parks people are involved in staffing, and we all pay a portion. That part's been taken off the table. I guess my concern was, we're not talking about sand, which is what we're talking about. We're talking issues that are sort of the green issues, this sea level rise problem and this climate concept that is kind of, my opinion, not real science, but that's the hallmark of the level, instead of just focusing on sand. The purpose of everyone's to keep everyone on the same page so that we can get more sand. Well, where do we get our sand from? City resources, state resources, federal resources. The county hasn't contributed, but yet on this committee that was proposed, there's no state representation, there's no federal representation, either in the state assembly or the state republic. In fact, when I met Supervisor Foley at a South County Economic Forum, her first comment was Diane Dixon's not getting on that committee. Well, Diane Dixon represents a beach area, and her vote is just as important and Lori Davies is in getting, in getting sand. So I get a sense it might be a little bit on the political side, and that's unfortunate, but, you know, there's elections coming up and Diane Dixon happens to be running. So that's a whole nother issue that we don't need to get into. But, you know, there was also, when I was speaking with Alyssa some months ago, she said, "Well, we need state support." And I said, "Why aren't there state representatives and federal agencies involved?" She said, "Well, because it would be a potential conflict of interest." So, okay, well, why isn't Supervisor Foley's involvement a conflict of interest? Well, no explanation. They just, it would just be somehow, having the people that are actually making the money decisions involved would be a conflict of interest. They're not involved. They're not on the committee, nor is our representation, our legislative representation in the rest of the county, only this particular area. So I don't think, you know, I appreciate Supervisor Foley's interest in sand. I appreciate the offer to help with sand because we do need sand. I don't think we need another committee, another layer of government to do what we're already doing. And those are, those are my concerns.
Well, my last comment is that they're going to have that committee whether we join it or not.
The only button on the committee is the supervisor and Dana Point. Dana Point hasn't even responded yet.
There's going to be some kind of committee.
Committee, the committee is going forward.
There is no, by way of background, a committee like this was suggested some 10 or 12 years, 10 or 12 years ago, and it hasn't happened to date. So the supervisor's commitment to form a committee may be real, but to date, there is no committee.
So as far as I'm aware, and maybe Alyssa, you can help with this, as far as I'm aware, the signing for this committee is happening in, what, September?
It should be next month.
So next month, this thing is being formed, whether we are on it or not.
A little bit committee of one?
No, because there's others on this committee, right? Who else would be on this?
Dana Point was invited, and I understand that they responded.
They have, I have to call their city manager back or a deputy city manager. I think they're going to take a vote when they come back from their recess in August.
And probably the fact that the supervisor's willing to take the cost out of it, that's a huge, if this costs the taxpayers money, I would say no.
Can I give an example of what a type of project would be that we could work on in this committee, which is the?
I'm going to object. We've had, we've had public comments, we're in the discussion mode. I think you've had your presentation. I appreciate it.
I would like to hear it, though, because this is informative of why we should join or not.
I know, I know you would, and she's given us wonderful reasons why we should join, and we have Supervisor Foley's letter. So that part of the agenda has been completed. Thank you, and I appreciate you being very helpful.
If you have other questions, Mayor or Councilman?
This is not a time to ask you questions. You've had questions, and you've answered them. Thank you very much. Mr. Wu, do you have any comments before?
Yes, I do. It's unfortunate this thing becomes a political, and a sand is not a political, and we just joined ACCOC. It's another, it's another governmental agency. There are lots of forums, as Rick said. I don't see a downside. We're not losing anything. We want to have a seat on the table of any forum, especially if it doesn't cost us any money. So I'm in favor of it.
I'll make a motion, then, that we join Supervisor, we join the South County Beach Coalition Committee.
I'll second.
I have a substitute.
Substitute motion?
A substitute, or unless you would take it as a friendly motion, that we identify someone, actually, I wouldn't mind being on that committee if we're going to approve it.
Well, you need another committee, Victor. Sure, yeah.
But we join as co-chair people of that committee if they will allow us to.
Have two people from our council on?
No, just me.
Just you.
Co-chair of that committee, yeah.
Well, that probably has to be worked out.
With them.
As a committee, right?
Well, there is no committee. There are no bylaws, and I guess the group would have to form and create them. And we have, there's a draft floating around, and that's all we have for the committee.
I call a question.
Sorry, there's no second on the friendly amendment.
What's the substitute motion?
That San Clemente identify a co-chair person to be on the co-chair of that committee and make that proposal to them.
I think that's an important issue because, you know, it is our beach. Dana Point has very little public beach that they're responsible for with the harbor.
I wouldn't make that part of the motion because I'm not sure that that's even, that's like you saying the OCFA should make San Clemente you a co-chair of the OCFA. I just, I just don't think that's feasible.
This is a committee, just being formed. They don't have a structure.
Yeah, there's a motion to join the committee of San Clemente as the co-chair of the committee?
Yeah.
Co-chair?
Yeah.
With the no financial obligation.
No financial obligation, yeah.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any discussion on the second motion, on the substitute motion? Okay, let's vote on the substitute motion that Victor made. All in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion fails three to two on the original motion. Let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No? That passes three to two. So we have, we have direction on that, and thank you for being here, Alyssa, and we look forward to be involved in your community. Hopefully, we can co-chair it with you, with her.
Take that recommendation back.
The next item on our agenda is a consideration of a policy regarding citizens' ballot initiatives and imposing filing fee. Mr. Wu, you asked that this be agendized. You want to, do you have public comments on this, by the way?
We do have one public comment.
Okay. Mr. Wu, what are your thoughts on this item? I wasn't quite sure exactly what we were doing.
Yeah, so my intent, I have two objectives I'm trying to see if the council can support. Either one would be okay, or both is better. So the first item is I'd like to, I'd like to have a direction to the staff that every time a citizen initiative is submitted to the city, we post it on the city website. If you go to the city official website, there's a campaign statement. Underneath the campaign statement, you see all the campaign statements, you see recipient committee, and we even have a folder. We publish the tickets we receive, we reported. If we can have another folder, citizen initiative, then once a citizen initiative is submitted to the city and we post it there, and every council member is notified, then we all have the information that we can work on. What leads me here is that just two months ago in June, it came to my knowledge that a citizen initiative had been submitted three times and withdrew three times. By that time, it hadn't, had not been retrieved a third time, but now it has. So while some council members were privy to that information, I didn't know anything until June. It was initially submitted to the city in February. It's such an important issue because it has something to do with the sand, it's something to do with our beach, and it's something to do with our tax money. I think we, I'd like to know them when a citizen initiative is submitted to the council. And so that also allows the public to be aware of that issue. So that's a simple question. I think it will improve openness and transparency of our government.
And so what is the specific proposal again?
The proposal is that we would, with your support, we would give the staff a direction that every time any citizen initiative is submitted, it's formally submitted to our city clerk's office, the city clerk will notify each council member that there is something from the people, and we also post it on the city official website.
Is that, is there any problem with doing that?
As long as it's posted simultaneously or before it's provided to a majority of council, there's no legal issue with it.
Okay, that's your suggestion. Let's hear from the public before we discuss the proposal.
Yeah, the second, the second item is...
Another item? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the second item is, there is a law from the election code. I will read it. It says, it's from Election Code 9202B, that any person filing a notice of intent with the elections official shall pay a fee to be established by the legislative body not to exceed $200 to be refunded to the filer if, within one year of the date of filing the notice of intent, the elections official certifies the sufficiency of the petition. I'd like to see if the council can establish a fee. $200 is really not much. I don't think $200 will inhibit any citizen initiative. And if you think $200 is too much, we can lower the number to any number you want. What I would like to do is to make it just a little more formal, so someone cannot, let's say, someone cannot submit to a city something that's not well thought out, that's not mature enough to go through the process, because every time the city clerk needs to process it, and our city attorney is obliged by the state law to prepare a neutral title and summary, and that costs money, and we cannot, there's no way to recover that cost. So the filing fee, which is refundable.
And the purpose of the fee is to just guarantee maturity and sophistication and appropriateness of the filing?
Just that people are serious about their initiative.
So if they file a fee, they're serious? If they don't have to file a fee, they're not serious?
No, if they file, if they file a petition and later just withdrew it, they lose that fee because it will never become sufficient.
Could I ask a question, Mr.? How many times has this happened?
This has happened three times in this year.
In the past decade, how many times?
I have no data.
Let me finish my questioning.
Oh, sorry.
So three times this year, and are you aware of what was filed? So, three times this year, and are you aware of what was filed?
Yes.
And what was filed?
It is, the first time it was a tax increase of a point of five percent. The second time, it's the same. I do know, I, I don't know what's the difference between them, because I did not compare. The third time, it was a combination of tax for sand replacement and tax for fire protection.
Okay, and so you want to tax our citizens for filing a, a measure in San Clemente?
No. That's not what I.
The $200 is a, is a tax on.
The tax was proposed by the filer. I want to establish a fee, a filing fee. It can, if it, $200 is too much, it can be 100, it can be 50, it can be any number, but I'd make it more formal.
Well, I just, a question. I, I don't think that there was separate frivolous initiatives filed. I think there was an initiative filed, and I don't, there was a problem with it legality-wise, and they pulled it, and they had to, they tweaked it a couple of times, I think, if you're talking about the same thing, and now it's ready for signatures. So, you're saying that when they pulled it or had to tweak it the first time, you should charge them two, that's non-refundable, the second time, another 200, and the third time, it's okay, because they tweaked it and went through, so it's gonna cost them?
If it went through, they got a refund. It's refundable.
Well, I don't know that there was three different initiatives.
The third time, they withdrew it again, so it's gonna be, they're gonna forfeit the money.
Okay. So, you have two proposals, one to notify if there's a filing, notify the entire council immediately, and the second one is to create a filing, a $200 filing fee or another number, but $200 is your recommendation?
A filing fee, any number.
Any number of filing fee.
A dollar, whatever the number is.
To assure seriousness of the initiative files.
Frivolous, I guess.
So, it's not frivolous. Okay, that's your proposal.
Yes.
How, good, cause, a question?
Yeah, well.
How's a dollar not frivolous? I mean, how do you, how do you, you say charge it a dollar, how will that ensure compliance?
The compliance, we charge a fee if they, if they.
Yeah, but you said a dollar, so how is that going to achieve your, what is your goal?
To make it more formal. It'll make it more formal. When people need to pay for something, they think they need to do their homework and make it, make it well thought out, and that has a potential to go.
Okay, let me ask you, are you suggesting that what was filed was not well thought out?
No. Well, because someone can come, come to the city and fire 100 initiatives, and that's gonna put a lot of, uh.
Is that a problem? You identified three this year.
All the same initiative?
It's the same, yeah.
So, that shows not frivolousness, but seriousness when they file, and have to make minor corrections and come back.
Right, I didn't say they're frivolous, I just say it's not, you know, people need to do their homework and make sure the work is at quality.
Okay, well, I think we understand your recommendation. I think now the public probably has an idea of your recommendation, and we have one public speaker to speak on this.
Yes.
Let's hear from that person.
Amanda Quintanilla?
This item was discussed at, at the, one of the Friday coffee chats, and, and the reason why was because the, one of the representatives for this ballot initiative spoke, and basically he had mentioned that there was, that they had, there was a legal challenge that they had to meet, because essentially, it, it can't be, this ballot, the citizens', citizens' ballot measure can't be the same as Measure BB. So, if not, it would be considered basically usurping what the voters voted for under ballot Measure BB, which was unsuccessful. So, the, the person spoke and said that, yes, that the citizens' initiative went to and filed this initiative, withdrew it, and then tweaked it a little bit, and then went to do a second initiative, or the revised version of that, and that's when, from what we were informed, that the city attorney appined and gave her impartial analysis regarding the citizens' initiative, and then that was withdrawn. So, I have no idea what, it wasn't conveyed what, what the city attorney appined on, or what, or what was the suggestions from our city attorney. However, then, the, again, the same person filed another one, and another initiative, and then the city attorney was reviewing that, and that's when it, that person withdrew it again. So, I think there was a concern regarding how many times that this person is going to keep on doing this and using our city attorney's time to, to do, to write impartial analysis, and there was a concern regarding the, the people there, that, you know, there is time that the city attorney's, you know, taking into consideration writing an impartial analysis, and, and the big hurdle was, let's make it different from the ballot Measure BB, and that's why the OCFA is trying to put a fire protection element to that. So, and that they're trying to get away from the, or taking away the legal problems with that. So, I, I think I am, I am supportive of council members and Wu's. It's just, you know, a, just in, like, $200, I mean, when we ran for city council, I mean, we had to, you know, there was an option, if we wanted our statement to be in the booklet, it was like $500 and something dollars, so I, I think that having this type of situation, if you get the money back, then there's no problem.
I can make one comment, and then.
Go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, just, I don't know, for me, this is just another bureaucratic layer that is just unnecessary. They could issue it, then we have to refund it if they get it through, and it's, it's just more government that, eh, I don't necessarily.
My argument on the last item.
There you go.
You're taking an argument.
There you go. So, I, I'm, I would not, I, I like the idea of, of your first recommendation, that, yes, I would like to be informed when these things are, are put forward, and be good for the public to know about it, too, and I think, I think we can do that with direction to staff on that, maybe not necessarily a, a full proposal, but just direction to staff to, hey, let us know when these things happen.
Do it by policy, not ordinance.
Yeah, and, but the, the second one, look, our, our citizens are trying their best to, to do something that, in their minds is a good thing for the city, let's encourage public participation, not make it harder, so.
Good comments, Victor.
I, I agree with the comments.
Yeah, I, I agree, too. If, if, the last citizens' initiative before this previous, you know, the one we just had was, I don't know, 2012 or something, I mean, the open space thing, and that went right through. I don't think we've ever had any, 2009, well, even longer, and I don't think we've had an abundance of people coming in for citizens' initiative. If it becomes a problem, then I think we can readdress it, but right now, I don't think it's a, a problem we need to solve, but I do, I do like the posting, I think that's completely appropriate, and I would certainly support that.
Maker of the item, or bringer of the item to our table, do you want to make a motion on your?
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we, we, there's no, there's no need for resolution, there's no need for ordinance, we just collectively give the direction to the staff that, to do, to notify us whenever a citizen initiative is submitted.
On item one?
On item one.
Not on item two?
No.
I'll second the motion on item one.
Well, I think that's just, they've agreed to do that already.
We don't need. I think if we change policy, we should vote on it, because otherwise, the policy manual won't get changed. I mean, the staff can say we'll do it, but if the staff doesn't do it, they need to have a policy to direct along those lines.
Call the question?
Yeah, any, any discussion on the motion? Call for the question, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Passes five oh. Next item is.
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar. Do you have any public comments? Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, did you have?
Mayor, if you could, at, at your discretion, if you could remove for further discussion table, I guess, item 11J at the request of staff, I would appreciate it.
Actually, wait a second, I don't agree with that.
Well, why don't we take that?
I'm over the rest.
Of everything except 11J?
I move the rest of it.
Anyone substitute motion or additional items I'd like pulled? Has anyone from the public asked for any of these items to be discussed?
Item 11J, we have a speaker.
Okay, well, then, let's, we have, who, did someone make a motion on the remainder?
Second.
Motion made, my Mr. Wu, second, and my Mr. Lefler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we'll take up item 11J.
This is, this matter, I, I think was gonna be pulled, I, I don't have any opposition to be pulled, but I, I actually think it should go to our beaches and parks for a recommendation, and the thing I would like to study for, for that area is, I, I think, when we're looking at the Olympics, and we, we've been talking and discussing here, a place to have.
Showcase in our town.
Showcase in our town, I'd like them to take a deeper dive with, with city guidance on how we could tie this in to the Olympics, and, and maybe even get Olympic money for it, for a ceremonial area, rather than just tabling it at this point in time.
I can second that.
All right.
Okay, the motion is to refer to Parks and Recreation for input?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion of the motion?
I think, I, I make some comments, since it's, it's an agenda item. In my view, but if I were to do it, I, I think the most important thing they need, Pier Pride needs, is a great idea, so they can use it for fundraising. So, we can always find competent engineers and an architect of record to create the construction drawings, that's not anything urgent. In order to get a good idea, a good concept, maybe they can just launch a design competition, invite all the firms in San Clemente, all the firms in Orange County, or even globally, and they can raise some money for prize money. The city may be able to help to create a base, a base map. In the contract, there's some, some dollar amount for a base map. I, I would, I would be okay to help them to create a base map, so they, they have some basis for, for the design.
If I may, they, they do have some, some beautiful renderings that have, have already been put forth, and, and they have been used to gather support and a lot of other things. I think the idea here is that, with the Olympics changing some of our ideas, as well some of the costs, and also what can be done in-house in terms of design, that there's just some, some tweaks that I think can be made here to make it a little bit more efficient, and might be good just to send it back to Beaches, Parks and Rec to take a look at it before it comes back to.
I would support that.
The, I appreciate that. The, the, the concept that Victor's described, and that you all have described, is really beyond just a parks activity. You're looking at a, the Olympics, you're looking at national recognition that will, that will exist for the next few years, and well beyond, so looking at that concept, I think should almost include the Arts and Culture Committee, because if we really want to show some pizzazz, the Arts and Culture component.
Yeah, yeah, because that is, that is combined together now with Beaches.
That emphasis is huge. In fact, there's a, there's a large organization that, that funds art, artwork, and I've been reaching out to them on a, sort of trying to find an extraordinary project in San Clemente, and this location's relatively small, but it's very, very visible, and, yeah, I like, I like that concept.
And also, since you said they already have some visual, I'd like to, I'd like to see some images in the report, because I'm a visual guy. I'm a designer, I need to know what I'm, what I'm paying for.
Yeah, I didn't see any visuals in the report.
They, they put them out before on their different venues, yeah, like, like, like a year ago.
Okay. All right, we have, was that a motion, Victor has a motion, and was seconded by?
Before, pardon me, it was, the second was by Mayor Protonimmar, but do you want to hear the speaker card before you call for a question?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I, I apologize. Come forward, Amanda.
Amanda Quintanilla?
Sorry. Well, I'm glad that Mr. Hall tabled this, and, but I, I think that there are concerns regarding these plans, because prior, prior designs went through a design review committee, subcommittee, and where, you know, it was former Kathy, former mayor Kathy Ward, former mayor Wayne Eggleston, Don Brown, Larry Culbertson, myself, all spoke in opposition, and what they were trying to do was going beyond the pier. They were trying to make changes regarding the tsunami evacuation route by putting all these speed humps, and they were out of their scope of, out of their scope. And so, actually, one board member stepped down because of the previous, previous plans that were submitted, that were not well thought of. But however, the, the concern that, I just really am appalled that Pier Pride never discussed that the city of San, city of San Clemente was going to pay. It was the understanding that the money, the funds were gonna be coming from Pier Pride itself, and it was not going to be coming from capital improvement programs or any grants at all whatsoever. I'm concerned that the, there was no designs presented here, and the fact that they wanted to have the city pay for $70,000, but, and, and then that contract, it states nothing about in-kind donations from Pier Pride at all. So, I'm really concerned about that. I did speak to two board members, and they were concerned. Also, former board member mentioned to me that all of these plans would have to have a California Coastal Commission approvals, so this is not a simple thing to do, but I understand that what council member Cabral is stating about being in the Olympics and doing something, that that would probably be, the stage would be probably Park Del Norte, Park Del Mar, which is out of, out of the scope of Pier Pride. And so, so I'm really, you know, concerned about that, and raised some issues regarding, you know, the funding aspect of it, and, but there was never any, the one meeting that I was at, it was at the, the community center, at the fireside, there was nothing regarding any funds coming from the city or from capital improvements. So, this is just something that should have gone through the Planning Commission, not be PNR, not the Arts and Culture Committee, but back to, because there's a retaining wall that they wanted to take down.
And just a comment, I don't think the city manager asked to table this, he has to pull it off the agenda so that he could do the kind of analysis that you were discussing, so, in any event, we have a motion, we have a, we have a motion on the.
We do have one more speaker card, Mayor.
Pardon me?
We do have one more speaker card.
Oh, we do, I apologize, I didn't see the card.
I'm gonna make it 10 seconds. The point about the Olympics coming, and the importance of this, and how this is gonna go forward and everything, and I'm gonna start bringing this up at city council meetings going forward, because it's time to start having this discussion, and I haven't heard this yet, and it needs to happen. It's our 100th anniversary, that pier will be 100 years old, and when we consider redesigns or upgrades, or celebrations, or the grandeur of the Olympics, in my opinion, the Olympics are great, I grew up surfing, but I think the 100th anniversary of our town is a bigger deal, and I would like us to start having that discussion, because 2028's coming, but right about now is the time to start thinking about that. And so, we mentioned Art Committee, and this committee, and the grandeur, and all the rest. I just want to start putting that exclamation mark, and I'm gonna start doing that every few months, but anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you very much. So, you have a motion to trans, to us?
Yeah, I just want to, it's also the 250th anniversary of our country next year.
And that is actually probably even more important.
Okay, do you have a motion, Victor, to transfer this to the beaches and parks?
Yes, I, I made, I think I made the motion already, and.
Mark seconded it. Okay, then, we have motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. The consent calendar is completed, we postponed the council member reports until this time, so let's.
Mayor, actually, we have oral communications, part two, before, oh, excuse me, you're right, council member comments.
Did you ask that to go before oral communication or after? After communications?
Yeah, I think we.
Yeah, I think we said.
After, okay, then let's have oral communications now.
Or, I think I said after consent, but I'm fine.
Yeah, I think you did say after consent, but.
We'll just get the orals out of the way.
Yeah, let's.
How many are there?
How many, how many comments, just one, let's hear for, let's hear for the public comments then, we'll, we'll take that now.
Mike K, Mike K's the speaker. Mike K has not spoken under oral communications.
The item, wasn't it?
Nope, I didn't do first oral, you get first or second oral, and you get the independents, I didn't do the first oral, I want to, with oral, I guess, I get to say anything, something I want to say for a long time, why are we not a charter city, we are a very conservative place, we have a really uniform kind of idea, big towns like Long Beach, Anaheim, et cetera, this, Santa Monica, liberal town, are charter cities, if we were a charter city, the courts are still arguing this, but we probably wouldn't have to pay prevailing wage, our contracts could be much lower, we could save a heck of a lot of money, it would give us a lot of freedom to do a lot of stuff, just one of those pie in the sky kind of ideas, but others are kicking these, this around as well, it is something that's discussed periodically here in town, and, I don't know, long term, would be something to kind of think about, it seems like we would be a ripe candidate to become a charter city, just a thought. I wanted to follow up on the GOATs, thank you so much for your vote, some great comments.
We, you addressed GOATs in the fire section, you.
Can I not follow up at orals, you couldn't at all?
Other topic altogether.
Oh, I thought I got free, free rant on everything.
We already had an agenda item on that, you didn't speak to it, so.
Okay, huh, all right.
You're welcome.
Charter city, charter city.
Power to the people.
I am going to get a haircut, charter city.
Yeah, thank you, next public speaker, now we'll get back to the, no? You wanted to speak on something that's already been addressed, is that?
Just following up on oral communications.
Okay, no, we, we, thank you for that, and by the way, we, we didn't mean to cut your people off, we had some technical issues, but we only have three minutes, and we need to kind of keep to that rule because of, so, it's a vitally important issue, it's a significant issue that's probably the largest threat this city has ever seen or will ever see, so, I think the, and when we get to agendaized items, we'll be discussing what we can or can't do with your suggestions that you made earlier, so thank you for what you've done.
I wanted to apologize for the misunderstanding, the county has a strange thing I wanted to say, we want to get down to the difference between the.
No, we, 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 we can't have an additional comment, because, but, but thank you for coming back in, no, no problem, thank you very much. Yeah, we have, we have the, if we violate it, someone's going to come, you let him, you let him talk, and now you're shutting me down, and then we got a civil, civil rights case against us, we've been sued before about that sort of thing, so, thank, thank you very much, Gary, for what you're doing. Oral communications, future agenda, excuse me, council reports. Victor, you want to start, or, why don't we start with Mr. Wu this time, let's, let's start at the far end, Mr. Wu?
You always start with me, and.
No, I started mostly.
I know Victor has, Victor has waited for a long time, I, I like to give it to Victor to start.
I'll go then, I'll make it really long, to, have a half hour?
Yeah, we're here, we've got the 11 o'clock rule, so we'll be, all right.
We got a lot of time, man, I'll, I'll make it slow. We had the golf course committee meeting, which, which I attended, there was an issue of a lot of errant golf balls, that, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention at the committee, can take a look at the, the minutes of, that should be at one of our next meetings of the golf course committee, there's issues of design, and there's a whole bunch of issues, I won't go into them, but take a look at the videotape that's online, had a meeting with the downtown business association regarding parking and enforcement, and particularly, we, we talked about their restaurant week, and I'd like to just give them a shout out, it's October 10th to 19th, with the downtown businesses, if you get a chance, they'll be publicizing, promoting it, but the big issue that we, we talked about was parking and parking enforcement, beautification of the trees, there's also a downtown business association meeting tomorrow, Cal Cities SB 79, that bad bill that we've, you, we've talked about several times, it's plugging along, the 28th, it's before the appropriations committee, the last day for any bills is September 12th, we'll see if it gets passed, it's likely to get passed, there's also a, a bill that we need to watch out, it's a, regarding the Brown Act, and, and requirements that are going to be imposed on us, on Zoom comments, citizen commissions, special meetings, a lot of stuff that the, the state wants to, a lot of rules that the state wants to impose on us, and we're following that also. Participated in the San Clemente Chamber Fiesta, I, I spent the day with, with Wayne Eggleston, all day, at the, collecting donations and selling merchandise at the Marine Corps, for the Marine Corps, the 2-4, on behalf of the Heritage of San Clemente Foundation, we raised a lot of money, sold a lot of books, had a lot of t-shirts, and it was exciting, because you get a chance to talk to hundreds of people that just stopped by, and want to know what's going on with, with the Heritage Foundation, and, and about other city issues that I had a chance to talk to people about. Also, we had an Olympic meeting, and, and Andy joined me on that by, by web, it was with the Mission Viejo, with Bryden Goodell, who's an Olympian, who has been successful in getting Mission Viejo involved in the Olympics, they've already got, I think, the Dutch coming to use their facilities, so we talked about all that, they, we also set up our staff with a briefing with their city on all the activities that they're involved, I have a whole list of things that they're working on with a number of countries, most importantly, the thing we missed out on, they sent their, a couple of city councilmen to the Paris Olympics, so that they could find out more about this, and next, next Olympics, if we're here, if we're around, maybe we'll go to the, the next Olympics. Oh, okay, well, we won't go.
We'll send you to Tahiti to have vacation.
Yeah, we missed out on Tahiti.
We missed out on Tahiti, met with Bella Colina regarding some issues that the, the golf course met with, Save Our Beaches, went through all the sand that we, samples that we have here at the, at the city offices, explained them all to them, where they came from, did the city ethics, I think we, almost all of us did it this, this week, met with the Cotton's homeowners association regarding some issues that they're having there.
Which association?
Cotton's, Cotton's Point, yeah, a little development at the south end of our city, great people there, met with the Cypress Shores homeowners regarding the, the work that we're doing there as a city, that's not yet been completed, they had some questions about what was going on with that, and we got answers for them on that, was invited to the final concert on the beach in San Clemente, introduced the band, it was a great event, just reminds me of all the good work that the city did in restoring the beaches on the, restoring the sand to the beaches, because without that sand, there would have been no place for the people to sit, if any of you have gone to the earlier concerts, you saw, they're all, all great, did a ribbon cutting with Dark Magic Sushi, a new restaurant here in town, fabulous sushi, if you have any interest, they're in the, the old, what's it called, Old San Clemente Historical Park there, really good restaurant. What else, that, that, that's, I'll stop there, that's enough.
I had an opportunity to do a walkthrough of the Miramar facility, you can check that out on my Instagram post or, or Facebook post, you can see some of the pictures and the updates there, had the AB 1234 ethic training, went to Fiesta, fantastic, beautiful, wonderful bands there, also had my CASA JPA meeting, and there's a picture, CASA, the animal shelter, there's a picture I wanted just to throw up here real quick, Laura, do you have that, thank you, sorry.
What's that a picture of?
That is Tater Tot, so, a quick story about Tater Tot, he was found behind, what is it, Sprouts, found behind Sprouts, was big enough to fit into a coffee cup, and was abandoned there as a, we think a puppy mill, our Pet Project Foundation and our CASA was able to come in, rescue him, and he, he's still a puppy, but he had some health issues, he's doing great, he's doing fantastic, but I just want to show this picture as an example of what, what our tax dollars are going to, to helping these animals, one of the other things that CASA does is the, a rescue mission or arm, and whenever we have extra spots available in our kennel, we are no-kill kennel, we go up to kill kennels, and we rescue animals that are on the line for that day, and we bring them down to our kennels to help support when we have enough room and availability, so, that's all for today, thank you.
Mr. Wu?
Thank you, August 13, attended a educational event called Calms, Kelp, and Comebacks, Inside the Work of Restoring Life Underwater, organized by San, San Onofre Parks Foundation, it's a part of their summer speaker series, marine scientist Nancy Caruso gave a speech of her work trying to restore kelp, white sea bass, abalone, and pismo clam in Orange County's coastal areas, especially in San Clemente. August 14, met with Arts and Culture Committee's amphitheater subcommittee members, as well as a BPNR director, to talk about the status and the progress of their efforts to find a suitable location for a amphitheater in town, and they will come back to give an update to the council in the future. August 18, attended California Joint Power Insurance Authority's newly-elected official academy, that's all, thank you.
Chief, you want to start heading up here, you want to put up my slide, Laura, I'm not going to babble on about what I did, if you want to look at it, feel free, I was gone for a week, though, I was doing sand replenishment investigation, I found, found a bunch of sand, but figured out it was a long ways away to bring, and it's not feasible, so, one thing I wanted, I heard about some really good police work that was done last weekend, I just wanted to have maybe the chief give a little summary of it.
Good evening, Mayor Nobloks, members of city council, city staff, last Friday on the 15th, around 11 o'clock at night, deputies were conducting proactive enforcement around the area of Maxburg Park, during that proactive enforcement, they approached six individuals that were in the, the bathroom area during a probable cause search, and the park was closed, of course, at that time, they discovered two handguns loaded on one of the subjects, that subject was subsequently booked into juvenile hall, and the rest of the subject was cited for municipal code.
Outstanding, and I want to mention also, familiar with the band Inexcess, pretty famous band, one of their founding members, Gary Beers, lives in our city, and great guy, wants to try to figure out how to enhance our music in our town, and we're kind of trying to work on that, and if you're interested, his new band, Ashen Moon, has dropped a new single, Love Will Tear Us Apart, on Spotify, which is really awesome, tune into that.
That's an To Neil song, is that similar?
It's, it's, it's a cover, but it's a lot different, and I, and I just want to add, you know, having this at the end like this, it'd be nice if, you know, the chief could have given his, you know, when there were some citizens in there, if you think it ought to be at the end like that, when there's five people listening, it means that what you do really isn't that important, and so we probably shouldn't do anything, just let's move along, and I would be all for if you want to limit our, our amount of time that we have, but do it at the beginning when somebody's listening, or like I said, let's just not do it at all, because it means it's not important.
Any other, no, we don't need to have a discussion.
No, that's just my, that's my opinion.
And that's fine, I attended the ethics training with everyone else, attended a meeting at the golf course, at the golf course, citizens having problems with the major impact with golf balls, so the parks director, the city manager, and I met with the constituents and were informing them of the, of the architectural changes that we're doing out there to improve the play and protect the homes, it's difficult when you live right next to a golf course, but they're working on that, the, I had a Zoom meeting with the city manager and our United States Senator Schiff, who's with his staff members, they, they're reaching out to us to making sure that we're getting the fire mitigation help that we need, the sand help that we need, and they're all, all offers of assistance in any way we can use his office, so, I think as we move, move forward on the sand issues, we hopefully have another resource there to help lobby for, especially for the, the San Onofre nuclear situation, we definitely need help there, that, that concludes my report, what is, the next item is. For future agenda, I want to bring up, you know, Victor, you're on that, you're the, what, the sub, you're the co-chair of that sub, subcommittee, Songs?
Yeah, I'm the vice chairman, yeah.
Vice chair, vice chair, there were some pretty great comments made earlier, and I, I'm concerned that, in my opinion, the, the risk we, we have at Songs is immense, it's truly immense, and I know that we've tried for years to move that out there, Victor, I'm just wondering if the city did a resolution along the lines that was encouraged this evening, would that assist at the federal level, in your opinion, to just have another arrow in the quiver of moving the federal government to say, let's get a solution, let's get that stuff out of here?
I, I don't think so, I, I mean.
That's my concern, but.
I, I don't think so, one of the things, one of the pieces of legislation that was passed two years ago by Congressman Levin, is that we cannot move it out of here for five years, and so, you know, to say we, we need to move it, you know, we can't move it, we're not allowed to, the.
Well, he, he may have, there may have been bad legislation passed, my point is, as representatives of the people of San Clemente, is there any value in us simply saying, we need to encourage every authority at a higher level than we are, to get that stuff out of here as soon as possible, it wouldn't hurt.
It wouldn't hurt.
I know that it helps, but.
It wouldn't hurt, I think that's.
I would support that.
I think that's, I mean, I don't think there's anybody in California that doesn't want it out of here, everybody's singing from the same page, except, nobody else outside of California wants it.
Well, you're a voice for the, the city, and you've heard, you've heard the residents speak.
And I, and I agree with them completely, Mr. City Mayor.
Yep, if I could, during our meeting, I actually received an email from Mr. James Peters, Peterson, Peterson that works for, James Peterson, I received an email during your meeting, he works for Edison, and he forwarded me the resolution that the city council passed in 2021, so rather than pass a resolution on top of a resolution, you may want to reaffirm the resolution that the council's already passed, rather than have a, a resolution on top of, of another resolution.
What was that resolution to us?
I will do that, I will do that.
Yeah.
Reaffirming that resolution?
Yeah, that, that's good, yeah.
Yeah, let's agendaize or reaffirm, reaffirming that resolution, be sure it's included, in case we have to do any updates or changes, or put some additional language in there that, that squeaks a little louder perhaps.
So on.
That's the only item I have for future agendas.
September 2nd, yeah, Lieutenant Colonel Perry will be here, he's the representative of the 2-4, we usually invite him, I'd like to do a plaque for him, signed by all members of the city council, recognizing the history and the relationships of the 2-4. At our, yeah, I, he will be here on the, at our next meeting.
Second.
I, I believe, I believe that's the day, or whatever meeting he comes to in.
Well, I'll give it, I'll give it a third if you need one for the plaque. Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, excellent idea.
Yeah.
Mark, do you have anything?
Yeah, this isn't an agenda item, I think it might be a direction, and, and this is, topic has come up, and it came up tonight about the, you can't have audio on your video, and I'm looking at rules for addressing council, and there's some things here that aren't, that I, I think we just have to address, and we, we need to put in there, you know, that, I'm looking at what's in here now, oral communications, I think we need to put something that any, any presentation, audio, or video, needs to be, when it needs to be put in, which is the day before at noon, I know kind of people know it, a lot of people don't know it, we need to reiterate that, and that if any video presentation is made, no audio will be allowed.
Sure, we have a lengthy, three-page policy, actually, on.
On the website?
It's, it's on our city website, we could.
Well.
I guess, did you know earlier tonight, when that video was, they gave you the video to show, did you know that there was audio attached to it?
When I, when I played it in my office, it did not, the audio did not come on.
When it came tonight, it did.
Exactly.
There was obviously the expectation that you, that they were playing the video with the audio, and.
But they need to be informed, unless we change the policy.
Oh, no, I don't want to change the policy, I just want to make it more explicit.
Sure, we can add some language to the. Sure, we can add some language to the.
Is, is it already on here? I'm, I'm just reading the.
Even if.
Oh, use of electronic, okay.
Someone puts in a video that has audio to just let them know.
I typically do, yeah. Like I said, I played it in my office and the audio actually did not come up.
Okay. And I see it's on the back. Isn't, maybe you put all the rules addressing council on, on one place instead of on the front page and the back page? Because if you pick this up.
There are two locations.
If you pick this up and read it, you go, oh, okay, I get it. And then they don't get it. And then, oh, wait, if I go to the last page, I, I just, can't we make it continuous somehow? Even make the writing smaller or something and.
Yeah, that's, that's a good suggestion. Do we need any formal motion for that? Or can you simply change the format to make sure all the notifications are in one location?
Yeah, absolutely.
Audio, audio and videos have a codec compatibility issue. And there's no way we can guarantee that we can play. So it's all up to them. Whatever they submit.
I think the audio is, we don't want to play audio because you don't know what's coming necessarily. And I, I think that's what it is.
Well, I'm not sure because we don't know what's coming when someone stands up to the microphone either.
Yeah, but we can have Chevy come up here and grab them by the neck and drag them out.
We can have the city clerk push, push the button and turn it off.
Well, I, well, I, if, if that's not a rule, then I, I mean, I don't care about listening to audio if that's not some kind of government code.
We, we have a policy back from 2009. It's, it's, it's specific to that. And it was actually born from people coming, particularly during election season and having political campaigns.
Doing campaigning and stuff here.
Exactly. And so, right, exactly.
Yeah. That was you, wasn't it? Zen and.
They can always play their cell phone.
Well, they can. They, they can play their cell phone up against us. That's true. You can't stop them from doing that. But we, we also don't advertise it either.
Yeah. Did you have anything else for future agenda?
No, absolutely not.
Mr. Wu, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay, then I guess the next item is reports from commissions and committee reports, council subcommittee updates, city attorney.
Thank you. I just wanted to apologize for interrupting Mr. Otamian's presentation earlier. I was checking that the live stream video was still going. We did receive a report that it wasn't working. So it obviously was, and I apologize for that. But other than that, it's a pleasure to serve the city of San Clemente.
Who is not a ventriloquist? No, she's just watching YouTube.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing, ma'am.
Nothing to report? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn referencing our next meeting. Who wants to make it?
I'll make the motion to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, scheduled to take place on September 2nd, 2025. Closed session will begin at 4:30 PM and the regular business meeting will begin at 5:30 PM. Meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Cai Negocio, second floor, San Clemente.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.
It's a long one.